Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, April 9th at 1:00 P. M., and we're going to start off with invocation and a pledge. So, the invocation today will be given by John Lo, Senior Vice and Chaplain of Veterans of Foreign Wars in Inverness, Florida. Thank you for coming. And then, the pledge will be led by someone that's familiar to many of us that go to the Chamber events, Gary Mock. He was United States Navy, sorry, Go Navy. My favorite service from my family. For 23 years, he was in Vietnam and Cambodia with Joint Navy-Marine Corps Coast Guard Operation Market Time. And appreciate both of you gentlemen joining us. If you would please silence your devices, if you would care to join us in standing for both, we'd appreciate it.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us this time an opportunity to be here at a gathering for our county commissioners to conduct business. May it be done honorably and everything done for the good of our county and our people. May you bless our service people with safety, and we all look forward to seeing you all again real soon. And all of this, we do ask in your name. Amen.
Please raise the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both for your service. Okay, Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. It's the 9th day of April, 2024. In attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bayes, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schlebaugh, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondlin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Howard, we have additions?
Yes, we do. Just additional item E-12 Law Enforcement MSTU and Road Resurfacing MSBU. Due to the time sensitivity to create the law enforcement MSTU, it's a pleasure of the Board for the physical year commencing in October 2024. We would need Neighbors and Gibbling to start the process no later than April 15th, 2024. This was requested to come back for the Board several months ago, and we have that information to bring to you. Also, H-7 is just additional information, some edits to the ordinance. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I would additionally like to move E-4 ahead at some point, perhaps, I guess, right before consent. If we can get it at the top of the agenda, that would be fantastic because we have media here and we can let them go out.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Agenda A-4 with addition of E-12, H-7. Second.
And you're okay with moving E-4?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Bayes, a second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any Board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E-4. This is the renaming of the, well, not renaming because it's brand-new, a new T-ball complex at Bicentennial Park. We'd like to approve and authorize the naming of this new T-ball complex in memory of Chandler Stalcup.
Motion to approve, item E-4.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any Board discussion?
I just, Madam Chairman, I just want to thank staff for moving this along. I know we brought this up. Is LeAnn here? I just want to thank you for all your hard work, and this is an honor to be part of this. Thank you.
It absolutely is an honor. It was a tragic death, and he was such a hero to many in this community. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Board. All right, Consent Agenda. Would you like to take it in its entirety?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the Consent Agenda in its entirety.
Okay, motion. Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, is there any Board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Proclamations.
Madam Chair, motion to approve C-1, C-2, C-3, C-4, and C-5.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard. And is there any Board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Join me downstairs.
Those representing Trash to Treasure Art Expedition, if you could please come forward. Whereas each year, more than 230 million tons of solid waste go into the nation's landfills and waste-to-energy facilities. And whereas, in order to focus the attestation of our students, employees, and the local community on the importance of recycling, University of Florida IFAS Extension Citrus County, in conjunction with Citrus County Solid Waste Management, is sponsoring the Fourth Annual Citrus County Trash to Treasure Recycling Art Contest for Citrus County Middle School Students, High School Students, and Adults. And whereas artwork must have an environmental theme and be comprised of at least 70% used or recycled materials, the artwork will encourage recycling and will be on display from April 8th to April 19th at the Citrus County Courthouse in Inverness until being moved to La Canto Government Complex for the UF/IFAS Extension Citrus County Earth Day Celebration on Saturday, April 20th. And whereas, winning artists will receive prize money from generous sponsor donations, a total of $555 in cash prizes will be awarded to those entries that show the most creative expression and innovation in their use of recycled materials. And whereas, it is the hope of the exhibition sponsors that recycling awareness shall be significantly increased by students and employees as well as the community through the display of the thought-provoking artwork. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County does hereby recognize and encourages participation in the Citrus County Trash to Treasure Art Exhibition, welcomes the special showing of the entries, and commends the sponsors for promoting this extraordinary project in our local community, executed this 9th day of April 2024.
And we want to invite you all out to the lobby area. That's where you'll vote for the People's Choice until April 19th, and then come on out to our Earth Day event on the 20th from 10 to 1.
Those representing National Minority Health Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas Citrus County, Florida, a political subdivision of the state of Florida, supports policies of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HHS, Office of Minority Health, OMH. National Minority Health Month highlights the importance of improving the health of racial and ethnic minorities by promoting health equity, eliminating health disparities, thereby improving the health of all groups within our community. And whereas racial and ethnic minorities account for the smallest population in Citrus County, yet bear the heaviest burden as it relates to poor health outcomes. And whereas, the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County has assembled a coalition and developed a work plan and project to address health inequity and disparities in Citrus County. And whereas, Citrus County believes there are important long-term community benefits to be gained by working to improve the health outcomes of minority and ethnic populations. And whereas, community partners can work together to ensure that access to healthcare and healthy living opportunities are available to all residents and community members. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby challenge all governmental entities, businesses, students, parents, and residents within the county to participate in the National Minority Health Month and help end health inequity and health disparities, executed this 9th day of April 2024.
National Minority Health Month is celebrated every year in April. It builds awareness about the disproportionate burden of premature death and illness in people from racial and ethnic minority groups. It also encourages action through health education, early detection, and control of these disease complications. This year, the Department of Health, along with the Health Equity and Disparities Coalition, are hosting a Minority Health Fair on Saturday, April 13th, at the George Washington Carver Community Center in Crystal River to celebrate National Minority Health Month. This fair will offer no-cost health screenings and education, including blood pressure screening, glucose, A1C screening, nutrition education, hemoglobin checks, safe sleep, breastfeeding education, vaccination information, low- and no-cost CARSI information, a gift card raffle, and grocery gift cards, and many other giveaways. All are welcome to the event. Thank you again.
Those representing Child Abuse Prevention Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas Florida Bright Future depends on the healthy development of its children, and adverse childhood experiences, including the abuse and neglect of children, can cause severe and costly consequences for children, families, and society as a whole. And whereas, every child has a right to a safe, healthy, and happy childhood where they are educationally and developmentally on track, and research shows that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safer environments and nurturing experiences for their children. And whereas, it is vital that individuals, businesses, schools, and community organizations make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. And whereas, during the month of April, Jesse's Place, in collaboration with the Florida Department of Children and Families, the UF Child Protection Team, Youth and Family Alternatives, Citrus County Schools, Florida Department of Health, Citrus County, Livestream, the YMCA, Guardian Ed Lightem Program, Citrus County Abuse Shelter Association, and the Community Alliance of Citrus County, will be coordinating efforts to implement awareness throughout Citrus County about child abuse and to renew a collaborative commitment to break the cycle of abuse, empowering positive parenting practices and promoting the types of concrete support services families need within their communities. And whereas, Child Abuse Prevention Month is an important opportunity to urge all Floridians to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities and provide the optimal environment for healthy child development. Now therefore, the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, do hereby extend our support to all observing April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, executed this 9th day of April 2024.
I just want to take a moment and say thank you, Commissioners, for having the wisdom and the foresight to recognize child abuse as a community problem. Thank you for understanding how important it is that we stand together to say that child abuse prevention is all of our responsibility. The thing is, child abuse is preventable, but we almost play a role because effective prevention includes families, it includes community members and organizations, our elected officials and policymakers. We all have the ability to make a positive impact in the lives of children. So this month and throughout the year, Jesse's Place encourages everyone, all organizations, all members, to get involved. Educate, educate yourself about child development and educate yourself about the services available in Citrus County. Participate, volunteer, mentor children, advocate with your voice and your vote, elect officials that understand child abuse prevention is our responsibility, and donate, whether it's your time or your money, to services that support children. So we all need to do our part to build strong and thriving families so all of our children grow up in healthy and happy, safe homes. Thank you.
Those representing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, if you could please come forward. Whereas emergencies or disasters can occur at any time requiring law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services is critical to life safety, property conservation, and hazard mitigation. And whereas, the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Citrus County Sheriff's Office Public Safety Answering Point. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, each telecommunication officer has exhibited dedication, compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their mission in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, hereby proclaim the week of April 14th to the 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and joins in honoring the men and the women whose diligence and professionalism keeps our citizens safe, executed this 9th day of April 2024.
I'll just keep this quick. On behalf of the men and women, our communications officers that serve alongside our law enforcement, fire, and EMS personnel, we're extremely grateful for this proclamation and recognition. Thank you.
Those representing National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, if you could please come forward. Whereas the animal control officers provide outstanding service and public safety on a daily basis to the citizens of the county, and whereas the animal control officers are commended for the many dedicated and long hours of service they perform in serving this community and for fulfilling their commitment to providing the highest and the most efficient level of customer service. And whereas, Citrus County wishes to recognize the Citrus County Animal Control Officers for their services, which in keeping with the long and distinguished tradition of the animal control profession. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, hereby proclaim the week of April 14th to the 20th, 2024, as National Animal Control Officers Appreciation Week, and joins in honoring the men and the women whose diligence and professionalism keeps our citizens and animals safe, executed this 9th day of April 2024.
Thank you so much for recognizing our unit. We've made such strides in the last many years, and I'm just proud to be a part of such an amazing organization, a county that recognizes that animal cruelty and neglect are criminal offenses, and they do something about it. So thank you all for the support from our shelter partners, our agency, our commissioners, and our citizens. We appreciate it truly.
I must say, I know this is ceremonial and not policymaking, but it's truly humbling sometimes the groups that come up here and what they have to do in their day-to-day lives, especially dealing with child abuse, 911 calls, and animal control is just, blows my mind. So, a big thanks to everyone. Time certens. Where are we? We are at 1:20. So we have 10 minutes. And I am, we're only going to do 10 minutes of open to the public. We will come back to it after the time certens. So you have, if anybody would like to address the Board at this time? As a reminder, you get three minutes, five minutes if you have a letter on file, but you have to let us know. Please address me, the Chair, and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm DeeDee Headley. I live in Inverness Village 4. I've read over some different information around this new proposal that you are proposing. And my question would be, is it apply to only new homes being built? Or is it apply to every single one of us? If we have a large storm come through and I need a permit to repair my roof, does that mean I'm going to have to pay the approximate, what? I glanced at some numbers and talked to some friends, around $28,000 to be able to put this containment in my yard. I'm on a third of an acre. The place that it would make the best use of it would be in my backyard, which is above my septic drain field, which then would flood my septic drain field, causing me problems with septic, and then four, causing me problems with my house. Now while I condemn you, condemn you, not condemned, but condemn you.
Commend, commend.
Commend, yes. Thank you for trying to do something. I want to make sure that all of us that are already there are not going to be negatively impacted by a Band-Aid. I also would like to know if there's been any feedback from the Attorney General. I know several people have reached out to them and have been told that unless you're the person who sent the letter, that they cannot give you any information. So, we would like an update on that also.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge. I know you have a long agenda, so I will try and be under two minutes today. On or about March 15th, I called the county requesting information about the request of four relief by Mr. Dix with regards to the Pine Ridge Golf Course. I first spoke with Mrs. Gallagher, who referred me to Mr. Mike Bridges. He did not get back to me right away, so I called him again. I recalled him on March 18th or March 19th, and he referred me to the county attorney handling the case whose practice is in Orlando. He supplied me with the phone number, and I called and left the message that day. He did not return my call, and the next day I called his office and left another message to please have him call me. When I did not receive a call by March 21st, I wrote a letter, wrote and sent a certified letter on March 22nd, giving him a brief history and my request for information. The certified letter was received on March 25th, and I called on March 27th and left another message to please call me. To date, my questions have not been answered. As a voting resident in Citrus County and a property owner in Pine Ridge who has an interest in the outcome, I am requesting that you answer interest in the outcome, I am requesting that you answer my questions or instruct your attorney, Mr. Scott of Scott &amp; Roper, to reply to my letter or have your staff supply me with the answers I seek. I'm positive that there are a lot of other residents awaiting the answers to my questions. My questions are, what are the grounds for Mr. Dix's relief? What are the procedures of the hearing? And can the public speak? Are the hearings recorded? And can I obtain a copy? Where will the hearing take place? Has a date been set? I am also requesting that I be notified in advance as to the date, time, and location of the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Curtis Bryant-Lacanta. First I want to address you guys about the growth. I think you guys had the growth meeting this morning. I watched some of that. I don't think there was a vote or anything taken at that moment. But my issue with the growth portion is the way that the board addresses the growth. A lot of you guys are voting for specific projects, or pinching those as you do it, not wanting necessarily to approve the project, but you go ahead and do it anyway. I know that the hearings and things are structured, kind of like judicial proceedings. I know that you have to get evidence and all of that. But you're able to make whatever changes to many of these projects you want to. Perfect example is the recent project, I believe it was two weeks ago, for the Chick-fil-A, not Chick-fil-A, project. You guys went and approved it even though you said the intensity was too intense. You felt that there was too much going on in that property. But as a PUD, you guys were able to say, hey, we want, you know, four lots instead of six. So you guys can make those adjustments on many of these projects. So I just want you guys to go forward, thinking about that, thinking of what you think is best for the county. I know that you guys say that you can't really control the growth. It is here, but there are things you guys are able to do to manage some of that on these projects. Secondly, I've noticed uptick of ex parte communications. I know that your attorney asked you guys prior to projects that there's ex parte communication, and several times recently, you guys have said yes. I will say that Florida statutes, you require you guys to disclose that information, but more than that, it requires you guys to disclose what that information is about, whether it's an email, a text message, a conversation in person. The reason for that is that these proceedings are kind of like judicial proceedings, so any ex parte communication becomes part of the evidence for that. And so there's been no issues recently because all the projects have been approved, but let's say someone denies a project, they come back to you guys and say, hey, there's ex parte communication. They need that evidence there to dispute whatever it is. So just be mindful of that going forward. Lastly, I mentioned something about IV-4. Prior to, I know you guys are doing something IV-4 today, but prior to that discussion, I want to kind of give you guys an idea that's something that I haven't seen pursued yet. I spoke with someone, I can't mention their name because I swore not to mention them publicly for this, but someone that's was involved in the project previously has information about that. They said that there's a way that the county can put the infrastructure in place. I'm not necessarily paving the roads, and I don't think many of them want the roads necessarily paved, they just want the drainage issues fixed. So currently, the construction permits and things like that, there's certain requirements that they have, you know, swells and grading of the roads and widths of roads, things like that. But I was told that the county is able to waive some of those requirements to be able to put the drainage in for this. So I wanted to implore you guys to look at that alternative as well, see what you guys do within the county to add the drainage, waiving some of the requirements in some of those building requirements and construction, things like that for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This will be the last one, and then we're going to go to time certens.
Hi, John Drum from Inverness Village Four. I understand there's supposed to be a meeting, it may already happen, between the county and the city of Inverness to come up with a plan to resolve the issues at Inverness Village Four, looking into grants and so forth. I'd like to know if there's any, what's the status of that progress? Now where are we at on that? That's all I have.
Thank you. Apparently, we have time for one more. Anybody like to speak? If not, I'll go ahead and, what's our first time certain? No, I mean, what's the subject? It's a street vacate? Okay, so there's not a lot of setup time for that. We typically answer everyone after everyone is gone. So the, we will discuss IV-4 at 2:20. You'll get answers there. Mr. Bryant, I would say that I am frequently say that we have to shape the growth to be something that we want. And Inverness Village is for, sure, we can do anything we want to to fix it. Unfortunately, the rest of the taxpayers have to foot the bill, and that's kind of a hard no. So we're trying to figure out a way to get the appropriate parties to pay for it, and that's been the holdup. Joanna, are you all teed up?
Absolutely. Have my own trouble with the microphone, sorry about that. So this is a street vacate, and the applicant is here. Do you want to talk, or you want to let me do it? You're good? I shouldn't offer that, should I? This is vacating a portion of West Julie Avenue and South Magnolia Avenue. This is in a town plat of Homasasa. And this is showing on the map what's happening. You can see West Julie is quite wide in this particular area. And what is, where it's encroaching, I want to skip a couple of slides here. Those are the houses. One of them was built in 1908, and one was built in 1948. You can see the majority of both of the houses are in the right-of-way. The red area is what's being proposed to vacate. You would never know actually on sight that that is a road where that house is, or that this is a road too on Magnolia. So staff has reviewed this application. We have sign-ups from utility companies that have no concern. This will clear titles so that these houses come out of the right-of-way. That's it.
Get to the correct page. I should have been doing that while you were reading. Okay, so we need to conduct a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this item? Come on up to the front row and then, go ahead.
Okay. My name's Brian Thompson. I'm part of the owners of the property. And this is something that's been going on in Homasasa for years and years, if y'all familiar with it. There's probably 30 other properties within 500 feet of me that's out of line. So we're just trying to get it straight from, you know, being clouded to something that we can sell or whatever, get a loan on it or stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please take your name for the record.
Lisa Griffith. I just wanted to find out how much of the alleyway they are trying to vacate.
Okay. And you need to fill out a green card, please. Joanna, do you have the answer to that?
I'm going to have to look at the, I don't know if the survey actually specifies an area. It's not something we're looking at so much as we're looking at impacts. .13 acres. It's on the survey, page 328 of the packet.
It's how much?
.13.
Okay. So about a tenth of an acre. Okay, is there anyone else? Going once, going twice? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Board, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve SV 2023-00004, Thompson Street Vacate.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. This is going to be fun. We can just do, yeah.
Yeah, all right. It's Ms. DeFilippo.
We're early, unfortunately. It's 1:33.
I think Ms. DeFilippo is here, yes. There she is in the back. Thank you. Do you want to come up and speak first?
If you are, if you are going to want to speak, go ahead and relocate to the front, although maybe, maybe eating up more time is helpful on these fast ones that are five minutes apart.
Well, yeah, they take a lot of time to get here, but now that once they're here, it's good. All right, this is vacating a portion of the Chappie as addition to Crystal River Platte, and specifically some multiple tracks and roadways. So just to talk a little bit more on this one, because we've had a lot of inquiries on it, you can see it's a big area. There's paper roads running through there and very forested areas. This application, if approved, will allow them to have one big, large track for residential. Some of the neighbors are, what are they going to want to do with it? It's a house, I mean, it's residential zoning. That's all they can do with it, is what's already zoned there. The zoning is not changing in this area, but those paper roads and those track lines would disappear, and it would become one large residential site. So this is what you can see. It's quite a bit of wetlands on the site, too. Here, I kind of highlighted them in blue on the wetlands map, so they're paper roads and wetlands. You'd never know they were there, but this would make it be one large site. This one also has no concerns from utility companies and no concerns from county staff, and they recommend approval. And this is what you look like when you get out there, you would never know there's a road here. That's it.
Thank you. Want to, we'll conduct the public hearing. Yes, ma'am, would you like to speak?
My name is Nancy DeFilippo. I'm the landowner. And for any of the concerns, it will remain a private home. We plan on chickens for my daughter to live on for her life. And it will never be, it will always stay in one unit.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Would anyone else like to speak for or against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chairman, I just have a question. Joanna, are you saying paper roads?
Yeah, that's a term, it's not approved. So they're on paper in the plat, but they never were actually constructed.
I think that's the first time I've heard you say that.
I didn't, I can't take credit for it.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody like to?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Motion to approve SV 1274.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Diana Finnegan. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to, tell you what, got one more. Just so we can get into a little bit of a rhythm, how about the next three folks that want to do open to the public? I have not closed general open to the public. So the next three could come up if you like, and then we'll bang out the rest of these. Okay, going once, going twice? All right, I'm closing open to the public. You're, I know, we're going to go to the E's.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs, Edison.
You didn't wave, you didn't get up. I closed it.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're an old timer in here.
I was in the middle of the thing.
I don't mean that, your age, you're here, you're a regular. You are a regular, you know the rules.
I'll be back later today.
I know you will. And we look forward to it. I mean, I was even being slow today. I know I can move too fast sometimes. Okay, so our next one's at 1:40, so let's jump to the E's, everyone.
Motion to approve item E1A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E1A and B? Seeing none, any board discussion?
I just want to say one thing, please. Just a reminder, it seems like two years ago I had brought this up also with our bids. When I see just one local person, I'm happy that one local person did bid. Mr. Howard, we had talked a long time ago, there's things that we could do or help our community businesses to even know that they could bid. I would like to see us move forward with that. I know you said you've had some experience with that in the past, like kind of the opposite of a job fair, but I think that we have a lot of good businesses here that can maybe save the taxpayers money because they're local and don't have to travel so far, and that would help our local economy. I think that they just don't know how to go about this. If we can help them, I would like to see us help them.
We've actually, staff has actually talked about, I call it, reverse trade show. So they've done this, I guess, many, many years ago, but we're trying to work on that now, and maybe it'd be like a Saturday. We're trying to do more like an open house for the whole county. Maybe we were very successful a couple of weeks, we did that, but the same concept, we'll maybe do that for the local, but we're working on it.
Thank you.
We'll make it happen.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E2.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've already done E4, so we will jump to our next 1:40, yes? And then we'll come back to E5.
And is there anyone here representing Mr. Downs?
Say whatever you want.
My name's Sherri Anderson with Anderson Specialty Services. We were hired by Mr. Downs to request that the board allow us to vacate the alleyway that is between his two parcels in Old Homasasa. I believe there's backup in the board minutes, so if you have any questions.
Thank you. Joanna?
Yeah, as she said, vacating an alley between the south half of Lot 5 and Lot 6 and 7. So this particular picture is actually Oliver Street. This is not the alley. There's the alley on paper, it's on the plat, but in real life, here it is. You would never know there's an alley here. It does lie between his properties, so utilities in the area have had no concerns, and county staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And open the public hearing for this. Would anyone like to speak for or against it? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Board, do you have?
Madam Chair, motion to approve SV 2023-00005, Anderson Downs.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Baze. Is any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Nice to see you, Sherri.
Sorry.
Sherri was our old risk management.
Oh, yay. Welcome back. All right, let's jump back to E5.
Motion to approve E5.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E5? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E6.
Motion to approve E6A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, E7.
Motion to approve E7.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, a second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment on E7? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E8.
Second.
A. Through D.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment on E8? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E9A and B. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E9? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E10A, B, and C. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, a second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E10? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
Yippee.
Amen, sister. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E11, second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E11? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
I have one thing. Just a reminder, unless it happened within the last couple of weeks, and my apologies, but a thankfulness, thank you, Commissioner Davis, for paying as you had voted for a transfer last year for your travel and you didn't get it, and you had a sizable sum and you paid that. And I also paid mine. And I'm hoping by the time the next board meeting comes around, everybody has paid what was owed for last year because I think everybody else had voted not to move money or increase that travel budget. So let's clean up our budget and just make sure we've all got our checks to the clerk in a timely manner.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm not aware of anything, so can somebody please shed some light?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's unfortunate, and Erin left. But with the exception of Commissioner Kennard, and my apologies because obviously you didn't know, and mine was given on a piece of paper like this big, my fund balance. But all four of us had balances to pay for last budget. So yours may have gotten missed, so I'm glad I did say something. You can't pay it if you don't know it.
Mr. Howard, I mean, where did this come from? How did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see those. I don't, I mean, we'll look into it, but I don't, I don't see those myself personally, so, but we'll look into it.
I am looking forward to having much better tracking from our current staff level, the staff, too, because I have to beg to know where I am. And I'm making plans and going places, and I had a pretty good idea where I was. And so it didn't surprise me. I spent almost $10,000 on travel last year, which means I wrote a check for almost $7,000 back to the county. It cost $600 to register for things I go to, and these are not junkets. And I'm not doing it again, guys. I'm not doing it again. Because I'm taking what would be my vacation time and my vacation dollars to do work that I'm not required to do as a commissioner. I find that really sad. But I go to Florida Chamber events, I go to Florida Association of Counties, and I went to National Association of Counties where I was a speaker last year. It's a lot of money to do that, and it's tough. So hopefully we'll have better tracking and I can keep up with it because I believe I'm already out of my training budget for this year.
Sure, we'll be watching it closely, I'm sure, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlebaugh?
I also, this actually slipped my mind because I gave staff the receipts that I personally paid, and I was supposed to get back, like, I might even have gotten money back for my excessive travel. But it would have been even, actually, it wouldn't have been money back, it would have been even. But I would have been still in the hole like you, Commissioner Davis. But I had a surgery in October and it slipped my mind, but I did submit stuff to our staff at the time.
We'll follow up tomorrow and ensure that you all know where it's at.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I thought it would have been more appropriate for us to have an invoice, which I don't, I don't believe we, I didn't get an invoice, so.
Neither did I.
Would it be helpful maybe to give an invoice to the other two? Because it was, you know.
We'll put a better process in place.
I could see it getting missed, yeah.
We'll make sure we have a better process in place this going this year.
And was the fund balanced? Because in previous years, if there was extra money, it went to cover what it could. You know, I know Scott Carnahan sometimes didn't use it, he would do it. So was the fund balanced? Was it?
I don't have that in front of me. I mean, today, this is not something that was on the agenda, but we can follow.
Are you trying to get into my travel funds?
I'm at zero, I'm at a zero balance, actually.
I'm just kidding, but you.
But it could have maybe helped Commissioner Davis.
You are 100% correct. In years, in years past, if there was a commissioner who had additional travels, if one of us didn't use all of our funds, Randy would come and ask if it was okay to transfer those funds.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a reminder, when it was brought up by Commissioner Davis, I believe it was four of us, if you remember Commissioner Davis, that did not want to allocate funds to travel. And so that's why I thanked you in the beginning, because you had asked for that and that didn't pass, and you quickly paid your balance, and thank you, and I quickly paid my balance. So no, the only one, so Commissioner Schlebaugh's not at a zero balance for last year, maybe this year. So last year's money is still owed to the taxpayers of Citrus County for two commissioners. And again, that may have slipped, rightly so, because there were no invoices. So it's not like an accusatory thing, just as we're trying to get the budget firmed up from last year. If we wanted to vote otherwise, we should have done that, but two of us has paid, and everyone should pay because that's what this board decided for us to do as a whole.
Well, I.
I'm 100% sure that my two colleagues to the right will fully pay their bill if they have not already, and that they are both, they.
And I didn't mean to apply anything other than that.
It sounds like you are, so let's move on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we can go back to our time certance. Are we done? We're done with E's? No, we got E12, but we'll do our time certance and come back to E12, because that one may take a while. All right, H4. We love our new microphones.
I know, I think it's working now. So Commissioners, at the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to approve an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, mending Citrus County land use atlas map by redesignating previously adopted ordinance, excuse me, by revising, I'm gonna make this bigger. By revising previously adopted ordinance 2002-A09 to correct an error in the adopted legal description for application CPA AA-02-05, which is Exhibit B, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And also, the comp plan ordinance, which is an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, mending the Citrus County future land use map by revising previously adopted ordinance 2002-A08 to correct an error in the adopted legal description for application CPA AA-02-05, Exhibit B, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
All right, and I don't have a PowerPoint for this one. So in 2002, the county adopted a comprehensive plan amendment and an atlas amendment for SMG, Inc. And when it was concluded, what we can tell from the file is when it went to our graphics staff, we didn't have GIS design time, so we did a lot of hand inking on the maps. They noticed that the legal description did not close. So rather than correct that, they put a text notation on the map that says "legal description does not close" and put what they thought they had changed perhaps on the maps. So it's been sitting until 2024. Representative of SMG, and specifically Sean Garrett, has come to us and said, hey, you know, this isn't what got approved, what was supposed to be approved in the 2002, can you correct it? So we did go back and look. We had GIS, look at the maps, look at the legals. I did include in here the locator map and the survey provided by the applicant at that time. I agree that what was actually put on the maps is not the entire area that was approved or intended to be approved in 2002 to the best of my ability, to my knowledge. I was not part of this. But looking at the intent, looking at the locator map, looking at the survey, the map did not come out as it was proposed. So what this ordinance does is correct a very small part, all owned by Sean Garrett's, on his site, which adds additional industrial land that appears to have been actually adopted in 2002, but the maps did not reflect it correctly. So that's why you have a couple exhibits here. You have the exhibit from 2002. You have the exhibit correction, which shows the area that would now be industrial that wasn't on the map before, but it looks like it should have been. And then you have the entire industrial area on Sean Garrett's property. So that's what this is. I know it's clear as mud, it's hard to come back 22 years later and fix a mapping error, but that's what's being proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Katu. All right.
Public hearing?
Yep, that's what I was looking at. And open it up, would anyone like to speak for or against this matter? Going once? Going twice?
Hi, Rhonda Distel, Chris River. I was once involved with something where they rezoned to industrial. Can I find out the site address on this? I don't have my phone, I have no information. What site address was this?
Madam Attorney, do you have it? Is that what you're looking at?
I'm trying. We usually don't go by addresses.
So I guess, is there a photo of what shows which land, what parcel this is and what they're wanting to address in?
It's on North Citrus Avenue.
Right, so what's the change in comparison? Right here? Okay, that, that right here is remaining, that buffer. She's saying the buffer remains.
Yeah, total, yeah, total paperwork there. Rhonda, Rhonda, green card, please. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Going once? Going twice? We'll close the public hearing. Board?
Madam Chairman?
Motion to approve CPA AA-02-05 and direct the chair and clerk to execute the ordinances for the application.
Second.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I had my light on and I was gonna second that, but I do have a question for Joanna. Does this map that you, the cleanup map, does it match what was presented and signed by Commissioner Jim Fowler in 2002? I'm trying to figure that, it's coming through. The locator map, yes, but the legal description did not close. Right, but the map itself. The map itself, we're trying to make it match that, yes. Very good, thank you. Doesn't expand more. She was actually talking about expanding to the south, we're not doing that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 2:00 core. Maybe I want to tap dance, I'm kind of afraid to go back to the E's, that might take a while.
There's no ordinance or anything in this if you wanted to take it a few minutes early if everyone's here.
Okay.
It's not an ordinance.
All right. Mr. Green?
Madam Chair, or the Commission? My name is Jim Green, and I'm here on behalf of the Business Center for Citrus County. We're a 501(c)(3) that operates the Core Business Center. You have a PowerPoint presentation? She's working on it, okay. We're asking for your consideration to allow us to lease the unused portion of an underutilized facility at 7490 West Gulf to Lake Highway. We, I'm waiting for it to come up.
We have one, it's just not the right one.
That's fine, that's okay. We included in the presentation some statistics about our activities over the last year or so, but you had those statistics, we provided those to you in our mid-year report, just to let you know that we're doing our best to be good stewards of the small business community and doing our best to service them and try to grow our outreach with that respect. We received a grant from Duke Energy to do a study of how we should best serve the community, and we were actually looking, thinking it was going to be a small business incubator kind of thing. They basically said that probably wasn't a good idea, wasn't going to be successful, it was going to be an economic drain. But they did recommend that we consider opening a Makerspace. So we began doing research on Makerspace, visited several Makerspace, contacted several of them, we'll talk to you a bit more about that in a minute. We contacted some realtors locally to try to find a facility, worked with Frank Calcione to help us identify facilities. And he identified the facility at 7490 West Gulf to Lake as a surplus property on the county rolls. And we toured the facility, looked at it, it was perfect, absolutely perfect, what we wanted to do with a Makerspace. And we found out a little bit later, I visited the site with the county administrator and the director of Public Works, and the director of Public Works made it kind of clear that they really don't consider that surplus, that's really a strategic location for the manufacturer distribution of sandbags during flooding events. While we were there, Mr. Howard suggested, well, possibly we could put a chain link fence across one part of that bay, and they could use that, continue to use that for sandbagging operations. We might be able to use the rest of the facility, underutilized facility, for our Makerspace. So that's kind of where we ended it at that point. We looked at that, we believe we can make that work. And so we're asking for that consideration. So what's a Makerspace? A Makerspace is a place where people go to make things. And it's really an opportunity for a small business or somebody who wants to become a small business. And maybe they want to get into embroidery business, they want to make shirts like this. We would have embroidery machines there that they could learn how to use, select the right kind, we can help them with that. We have woodworking equipment already been donated to us, we've got some metal milling equipment that's being purchased and donated to us. We will have 3D printers, we'll have laser machines for etching and cutting and those kinds of things, circuit machines. It's a variety of things that people can use in a business and say, well, maybe I want to expand my business into that. So they could join the Makerspace and they could come and use those facilities for that purpose. Or we know, for example, in Tampa, they have youth days where they bring youth in to teach them how to disassemble and assemble electronics, how to do soldering and things like that. So we're looking at the possibility of maybe even partnering with the robots, robotic class or robotic club at the high school to get them involved in the process. I talked to one Makerspace that uses their space with the local electricians. They do training at their site to teach people to be apprentice electricians. They do the same thing with plumbers. So they use the site to do that, and we would have that capacity to do that, to work with people, to help get into those kinds of things and help with the process. What we're asking is for a five-year lease on that facility. And the reason for the five-year lease is we're going to have to spend a fair amount of money. We're going to have to upgrade the facility with security, access control, closed circuit television, significantly improved lighting interior and exterior. We commit to improve the exterior of the building so it looks much nicer. And also, at any time when the county needs to use the facility for sandbag operations, we will cease operations. That will be included in our membership agreement with our members, that if we get noticed that the county needs a facility for that purpose, we're closed. It's only going to be a couple of weeks, we'll be fine with that. We're happy to do that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about what we want to do, what a Makerspace is, and how we think it'll help serve Citrus County.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I've toured quite a few of them, one when I was at National Association of Counties in Austin, and it was just a, I have all kinds of pictures that I could make your eyes bug out with, wow, we need to have that, but we're not there yet. But this is a great first step, I think, so.
We know we're going to start small and we're going to grow, and we're excited about the prospect. We think it's a way for our organization to better serve the small business community, as well as the community at large, because other people can join and come in and make Christmas gifts or whatever it is they want to do to use the equipment that we would have available for them.
Great.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kennard?
I'm not yet sold on it being a great idea. I don't have a problem with Core Center using that space. My concern is, are people going there to learn how to use this equipment? Or are people there going, are people going there to use this equipment and create a business and then competing with other local small businesses who are having to buy their own equipment and pay their own rent and things like that? You know, those are folks who are paying property taxes and then supplementing somebody to go into business and compete against them. So I'm a little, I'm a little bit concerned about, if it's a, if it's a teaching, a learning center, come and learn to use this, and if you decide to. And if you decide to go out and open your own business, great, go, go for it. But a taxpayer-supported facility that's gonna put them in direct competition with other local small businesses, I'm not sure that's a great idea.
Yes, sir, I understand your concern and I will tell you that, that a business, once it starts into production, can't use the facility for production purposes. If they come in, they decide they want to try a particular expansion of their business or start a new business or something like that, we can help them through the process. We'll have learning carols where they can sit down and learn how to program and how to do the kind of things that need to be done. If they want to start a business, Core and Score will be more than happy to mentor them in the process of getting their business started. But they cannot use the facility at a production capacity. That's not allowed.
Okay, all right. Great idea.
And that was a great, that was a great question, but I already knew the answer. That's why I was already on board, sorry.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So if I wanted to expand my business and learn about 3D printing, I can come there? Do I have to be a member of the chamber to be able to come and learn about the 3D printer?
Doesn't have anything to do with the Chamber of Commerce. You would be a member of the Core Makerspace.
Okay.
Generally speaking, I've found that the fee for that is, most of them are fifty dollars a month.
Okay.
Or, or five hundred dollars a year. I looked at one in Lakewood that's seventy five dollars a month. So that's the general fee. You need to pay monthly or we'll give you a discount if you want to pay for the full year.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve H. five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment?
With the conditions that they'll close during hurricane?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
With the conditions that they'll close during, when the sandbagging sites are, is.
And also the modification of the building. We discussed about putting, I want to make sure that's in there, which we've, we've agreed to that already, so we're, they've agreed to actually pay for that themselves.
If there's any, this will be an absolute zero cost for the county. If there's something that needs to be done to building, the separation wall or fence or whatever that's gonna be. If we need to reconfigure the access fencing for coming in or way out, whatever it is, you know, there'll be an absolute zero cost to the county. In fact, we'll take over the minimal, I'm sure it is, electricity bills that you're paying now. As soon as we get the lease in, in place, we'll take care of that completely, no problem.
Super.
We also, I understand, I'm guessing, because it's currently zoned for government use, we might have to apply for a change of use with the planning and zoning, planning and development to allow for. What we would probably ask for is something like a trade school.
License?
Change of use.
Excellent. Yeah, we're not approving a lease at this time anyway. It's just, it's conceptual, so. Excellent, but thank you for going on the record with all of that.
We can build it in the lease, however, the attorney wants that with regard to if we're notified that they're gonna use it for, for flood control assistance, whatever, we're out of there until they tell us we're back in.
Super, thank you. Commissioner Baze?
I like the idea, but it does give me some concern with considering the amount of growth that we'll probably have over the next five years. And if we're tying up a government building, that it's been my understanding, is not considered surplus, that it's very much in need. That if we get to a point that we need it back, is, is there a way to draft some language in there that, you know, we, it's, it should not be the taxpayers' burden to have to go facilitate finding another space because we've leased buildings out. If, if we get to that point and it's a pickup, do we have some recovery?
I'm sure we can work together with the county attorney to work through that. I'm thinking we'll have those discussions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schleba and a second by Commissioner Kennard. And is there any further board discussion, Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, just, just to add a little bit of information to the background information, that, that piece of property was purchased through solid waste. So my, my understanding is that if it were going to be used for a different purpose within the county government other than solid waste, which I don't know that they're gonna have another use for it, certainly possible. That, that would not be the piece of property that, that we would use for whatever other needs we might have outside of the solid waste division. Because at one point I wanted to sell the building, get rid of it.
I've heard, I've had many, many people ask me.
And I was told you could do that, but all the money goes right back, right back into solid waste. And, and that, that was not looked on favorably because of the sandbag needs there, so.
Any further board discussion?
Chair?
Yes?
Can I request clarification because I did not hear an official amendment of the motion? Did they want to amend that motion?
Yes.
To add the condition that it would close during a hurricane?
Yes.
And there was also a discussion of a modification by the county administrator? Is that something else that you needed to amend?
Yes.
Yes. Madam Chair, just to clarify, I think, maybe Steve, Mr. Howard clarified, not hurricane, but a flood event, because we could have.
No, I, sandbags is the point. If we need, if we need to open the sand, that's the key word there, sandbag. If we need to open a sandbag facility, then it's not a weather event, it's a sandbag event. Which obviously is a weather event, but we don't want to get tied to a specific weather event.
Okay, so would be the motion was amended to add a condition that would close during a sandbait, sandbag event?
Well, sandbag need, if we need to open a sandbag facility, yes.
Okay.
And then the building, just for clarification, we'll still have our sandbags in this building. So there'll be like a fence that's put up, just want to make sure that's clear. We're gonna continue to have a presence in that facility, but we'll, we had worked together on that with a solution. I think we can do that. We'll bring that back in the, in the lease terms.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. And so Schleba and Kennard?
Yes?
I, I had said yes twice now.
I know. And Kennard?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Can we go forward with two, with the two fifteen, Madam Attorney?
Again, there's no ordinance on that, so as long as whoever's here for that matter, if they're all here.
I believe they are. If you're not five minutes early or late. We have the mayor in the house. Now we've hit the big time. Mr. Lamb?
Commissioners, Madam Chair and staff.
The usual name for your, for the record, though.
Oh, Steve Lamb, Vice President, Save Crystal River. Save Crystal River wishes to thank this board for ten years of unwavering support of the Kings Bay Restoration Project. We have removed over six hundred million pounds of detrital material and opened up eight hundred and seventy spring vents. Save Crystal River has already restored more than a hundred acres of Kings Bay and we are now permitted to clean another additional eighty-five acres. Just wanted to give you a ten thousand foot view of what's going on with us. We have a wonderful opportunity in front of us. Our TDC has allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do further restoration work in Hunter Springs Basin specifically planting. We would like to use the money instead to restore Hunter Spring. Save Crystal River currently holds the required DEP and Army Corps of Engineer permits to restore the entire Hunter Springs Basin, including Hunter Spring. On August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, Hurricane Adelia hit Crystal River, bringing catastrophic tides into the area, including Hunter Springs Park and the entire basin. As a result of the tidal activity at Hunter Springs Park, a large quantity of sand from the beach was washed into Hunter Spring vents. It is estimated that the once-first magnitude spring is now over seventy percent blocked. This, the significant blockage of the spring flow has a negative effect on the water movement within the entire Hunter Springs Basin, reducing its capacity to flush, flush out the basin during normal tidal activity. This can negatively affect water flow in nearby residential canals, the freshwater flushing of the Hunter Springs Beach, surrounding swim areas, and reduce the clarity of water from the spring itself. It is estimated that this project will require the removal of fifteen hundred to two thousand cubic yards of sediment encompassing the spring and adjacent areas. However, due to the unknown depth of the spring vents and exactly how much material has been deposited in the vents over the years. The material removed will be billed at a rate of a hundred and ten dollars per cubic yard with a minimum of fifteen hundred cubic yards. The cost is based on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar maximum project cost. CN Shoreline is able to provide a lower cost per cubic yard for this project because the company has equipment and divers in close proximity working on the Kings Bay Restoration Project. This comes at a significant cost savings. To add to the efficiency of this project, we have some local businessmen who are willing to accept the spoils from the spring on their property, which is Christmas Island. This will save on the de-watering cost, the pumping cost and trucking. The total saving some, is somewhere between eighty and one hundred thousand dollars. Significant. CN Shoreline estimates that this work could be completed in seven to fourteen days, once the permitting and the equipment are in place. As it relates to the original plan to replant Hunter Springs Basin, Save Crystal River has secured funding from the DEP to plant Hunter Springs Basin. So at the end of the day, this is a win-win project. We hope you agree.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Joe Meek. I'm the mayor of Crystal River and it's so nice to see you guys. Thank you for all that you do. Nice new microphone system here. Guys are making a lot of advances since I've been here.
Miss you, Joe.
Well, I'll miss you guys and you guys are doing a great job. And I stand before you today on behalf of the city of Crystal River just to tell you that at last night's city council meeting, we unanimously approved buying on, or I should say, supporting this project. It really is a no-brainer. The city council is fully behind it, as Mr. Lamb said. Because of the great work of Save Crystal River and some of the folks that are back there and all the great stuff that they do, they're able to continue to do what was originally talked about and with the plantings. But this is a real opportunity, we think, to be able to do something at a less cost than what we would have been able to do into the future. And so obviously this cleans up a, a huge park in the city. In addition to the city supporting this, we're also looking at what are different ways in which we can protect against this happening in the future. And I'll be candid with you, it's gonna be a difficult thing when you have a hurricane and a flood of this magnitude, but there are things that we can do that may be able to slow washing out the sand in the long term under a normal usage. And, and the city is exploring that and looking at a bunch of different things with regards to Hunter Springs and, and we're committed to continue to do that. But this is gonna be a, a big deal, not just for the Hunter Springs area, but the Crystal River Basin as a whole. So ask for your support and just thank you guys for all that you, you've done and all you continue to do to support our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I stand before you today as, as a resident of, longtime resident of Citrus County and Crystal River and kind of a, probably a nobody right now, I guess. But I've been here for fifty years.
You need to, you still need to say your name even though we all know.
You don't have to embellish on that. I, Ken Frank, City of Crystal River. And also as, as your ex-city manager of Crystal River. And, and Madam Chair, you recall, you had asked both city managers for a, a plan, you know, how, how do we, what's, what is the city of Crystal River in imminent need of TDC dollars? And, and City of Crystal River put together tourism mitigation plan. I think there's thirteen projects. This was listed in it. We, we presented that, gosh, it's almost two years ago now, and this is probably one of the most beneficial projects that I think that's gonna benefit tourism overall. I've, I've watched this spring for the past fifty years decline and a death nail was the storm. But this, this is a spring that probably rivals that of Three Sisters. It's, in its glorious days, it was a beautiful spring and now it's something.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, I think a lot of us do, so we wholeheartedly support this and, and wish that the commission would move forward with it. It's something that the City of Crystal River had previously asked for tourism money for, and I don't think you could think of a better project to spend it on. Thank you.
Much thanks to the entire organization. I've never been prouder to be from Crystal River. You guys have done an amazing job. And I'm so happy that Homasasa has theirs now and, and the Lakes Region with Too Far, so excellent work, guys. Commissioner Schleba?
My light is on. I just wanted to say, you know, you know how I feel about Crystal River and thank you for coming. But I find it's interesting that the mayor is followed by cameras, so you really are the big deal. Everywhere he goes, but wow, big deal in town. Thank you, sir.
The black shirts in the room.
Thank you, Joe, thank you.
The paparazzi.
Madam Chair.
Were you, just a one moment, she has the floor, just to make sure. Are you done?
Yes.
You just wanted to throw out some, okay, some love?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve these funds to be reallocated and to clean, to clean out, reallocated to clean out the spring. And then any remaining funds be used to plant and maintain the swift mud area of Hunter Springs Basin. Further direct staff to prepare an amended Exhibit A to the memorandum of understanding. And further authorize the chairman to sign the amended memorandum of understanding after review by the county attorney.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any board, further board discussion? Commissioner Finnegan?
I'll just say thank you for, gentlemen, for coming out. I think it's very prudent to ask for this change because if you don't have spring flow, you know, what, what are you doing with all the grass? We're struggling a little bit out in Homasasa and I know that that spring flow is so important, so thank you and thanks to CN Shoreline and Save Crystal River for spearheading all of this and showing us the model of what can happen, not only in Citrus County, but the state of Florida. Thank you.
I just want to say Lisa Moore's got a great mind.
Hi Lisa, you're hiding. All right, any further board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Way to stick the landing, guys, two twenty-one.
I've never seen this be so untimely.
I had help. All right. Madam Attorney, are you running this show or am I?
I think the, the first step the board needs to consider is which alternative they want to pursue. And if, if the, if the alternative is to pursue the ordinance, then we need to do our formal reading the ordinance into the record and so forth.
Okay. So I asked that this be brought forward. We have a new PE, public engineer that's head of Public Works. And he believes that this is a way for us to not stop the, you know, lift the moratorium on building, still protect the homeowners that are already built. And dissuade new building from occurring there. This is a way that you can, you know, add a generator to your house or so forth. The issue is, this is the, many of you have been asking for clarification on this. And the roof, roof replacement is one that I'm gonna need staff to confirm. I don't believe a roof replacement would be an issue. It is additional impervious surface. If you add any additional impervious surface to your residence, you will have to bring the whole property into compliance. Meaning contain all of your stormwater. So it does limit you, but it also fixes a lot of things legally. So that's where we are. It's what I recommend doing on, at the recommendation of staff. I'm passing that along versus doing the, continuing the moratorium. Want me to take the temperature of the board to see which way they want to go?
Yes, ma'am, we have to. If we're gonna proceed with the ordinance, we have to do the formalities.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I could go.
Okay.
Would any additional impervious surface, would that include accessory structures? If somebody wanted to add a utility shed?
Yep.
So then they're gonna have to do, if they wanted to do that, or add a swimming pool, that was.
that was not already permitted, then they would have to do an engineered stormwater plan on their property?
Yes, that includes even something as small as a pad for a generator.
Okay.
It's, we find ourselves in this very unfortunate situation. We're trying to fix the things that have happened in the past and fix folks that didn't do this development correctly. So, it's just, all of it is very unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in.
Okay.
So, does that knock you out? Do you have a...
No.
Just, okay.
I'm just looking for clarification.
You want to read the ordinance? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Finnegan did ask, she asked before Kennard, go ahead.
Well, that was, that was my concern, and I have more concerns now that you've even pointed out for a pad for a generator. So, if someone does even an AC change out and they want to change something and put a pad in for that or, you know, keep their home powered, I was thinking shed, if you add a shed. So, the problem was not to MSBU so high, but now they're going to have these engineering costs, and it's going to have to be redone every five years. I would like to know what these people think about that because we're trying to help them, not hinder them. Okay. I see how they feel about that. That was my deepest concern. My other concern is when we talk about drainage, and someone from the community mentioned this, draining without paving roads, and I have asked the same question. And I'm just going to start asking my questions so you all can hear that I don't have a lot to say here, but I've consistently been asking questions behind the scenes. I don't know that I'm getting a ton of answers. One was about, could we do some form of drainage while they're on dirt roads just to help them by? And I don't know what the answer to that is. And I had another thought, and I just lost it. So, you may have to come back to me so I don't slow things down, so sorry.
Commissioner Schleba?
I did not get that in my briefing yesterday. I thought that this is for new permits, which I understand a shed would be a new permit or a pool. But is there any way to do the language where if it's a vacant piece of land and there's no home on it, and they go to pull a permit and it's over a thousand square feet, then this would apply to them. But getting a pad for a generator is, they've already done, they've already had their impact on their land. Let's not put them through further issues.
Nope, 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 nope.
Is there any way that we could kind of table this and talk about that? Because I did not get that in my briefing. I thought this was a great idea. Yeah.
So, the issue, let me explain something first. The issue is, is that y'all, those that are already in IV four, you bought something that you shouldn't have bought. And we, nope, I'm serious, we will, I will have the sheriff's deputies come in. I will have the sheriff's deputies come in. You need to understand, I've spent untold hours trying to get a resolution for this neighborhood. I am more familiar with this than anyone sitting up here. So, you have to pay for your own roads and drainage. The rest of the county taxpayers are not going to pay for your roads and drainage, or at least I'm not going to vote for that. You may be able to get three votes up here, go ahead, work it. But I will not vote for the rest of the county to bear the mistakes that were made in IV four. I'm not going to vote for it. Okay? So, this is a way for you to break it down into bite-sized pieces. If you do individual stormwater management on your own property, you are going to see a decrease in the flooding. You're going to stop what's happening there. And then, I have it on good authority from staff, and there can be paperwork on this, that if it goes forward to an MSBU, that if you have already invested in stormwater, you will not pay either any of the stormwater assessment in the MSBU or only a fraction of the MSBU for stormwater. You would only be paying for the road. You've already paid for your stormwater collection. So, I have really worked hard to bring this to resolution. But ultimately, you guys are, you know, a few hundred residents of a county of a hundred and sixty-something thousand people. And we cannot give out free roads and drainage to one neighborhood. We just can't do it. Everyone else paid for theirs. Rant over.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Remembered from the last time, and I have another question. My other question, I have asked of staff, when the when the assessment, not assessment, the survey, if you will, the study was done for IV four to look at drainage, and the MSBU rates came out so high, that's what I had asked. Well, did they, did they look at just an overall, what the best plan would be? Or were they looking at what's vacant at the time? And granted, whatever they came back with, maybe if there were no houses, there would have been the best. But what was, what was good instead? I mean, were we one and done? This was the answer, and the study is over? Because I would have liked to see them come back and say, okay, houses are here. So, it would be less expensive not to have to purchase certain houses where the best place for drainage would be. But let's look at how to veer it on vacant lands. And I don't think that happened, and I don't know if we could go back.
It did, it did actually happen.
That, that did happen, well, I...
It happened in the meetings I had with staff. So, there were four homes at the top of the property, at the property at large. There were four homes at the top that were slated in the DRAs. And I immediately, you know, I had swift mud in the room at the time, and we immediately struck those as not being necessary because they were, just because of where they were, and we would not need to do stormwater in that area. And swift mud, I think it was actually Swift Mud's idea. And so, we were all in agreement that we could strike that. Where it comes down to is, we have to get the DRAs essentially for free, all at the bottom, mostly all at the bottom of the hill. And if we can get those for free, it becomes a reasonable cost for the homeowners to pay. It gets it down into the forty-something range, forty-something thousand versus a hundred and nine thousand. So, now we're kind of in striking distance, you know, of getting something that's not going to bankrupt people. And then we could fix it. But we've got to get that land for free. And that means, that's why we sent the letter and all the backup materials to Ashley Moody, the Attorney General. It has been referred to FDLE, they will give you no answers because they have no answers. The file has been referred back in January to FDLE. I was told it will take months for FDLE to investigate. And if they, pending that investigation, then Ashley Moody may be able to act. So, that's, we're playing this waiting game. So, my role here is to try to navigate very, very tricky situation, keeping in mind your welfare as well as the welfare of the rest of the county. And so, here we are. Yes?
My other issue with this ordinance would be, you had said this would help them, but what if nobody else builds? Like you said, it would be helped with the current drainage problem. But my fear, and that would work, what you're saying is more people come in and they're billed, and then they fix it. But if it stops everything, nothing changes. And the only thing changes is the group that's already there is kind of hamstrung, if you will, with what they want to do moving forward. So, I have some concerns about that. They're the only ones that will be affected if nobody else moves in there, and that still doesn't help the current drainage problem. It just makes life more difficult for them as they, as they move ahead.
It starts a conversation, if I may. It starts a conversation with the neighborhood that if y'all invest in your own stormwater containment, then you won't have to pay for the stormwater portion of a future MSBU. And so, that, if everybody collectively starts putting in those systems, you're going to see a big improvement in the neighborhood. So, that's, it's just starting a conversation. Anyone else want to step into the fray?
I still want to find some kind of language that says if the, any permits pulled after this date for homes not including a generator pad or a shed. I just, I can't, I was excited about this, but I can't support that. That, to me, is, and some, some homes could maybe not even handle the swells or the, if their septic tank was lower than what the home, the land is, and how are you going to do all that? It could cost a lot more money than the MSBU. I would like to see, is there any way to table this so that we could try to get better language in here? Or we don't have, are we against the time clock?
We're against the clock, and I've already, I've already made a point of that. But that would be up to Mr. Howard.
Madam Chair.
Hang on. Mr. Howard, do you want to bring up the Public Works Director?
Yeah, Marcelo, could you come forward, please?
Commissioner Kennard.
This is, this is no way to do business up here. We should not be wordsmithing on the dais regarding this ordinance. We either need to vote to support this ordinance or continue the moratorium.
Correct.
My suggestion is, stick to what's on the agenda. Let's, I'm going to support the ordinance. And ultimately, if there's, if there are things that need to be fine-tuned, we can bring that back and fine-tune the ordinance, pass it, and then make changes to it if we need to. But sitting up here, five, five elected officials wordsmithing an ordinance on the dais during a public meeting is no way to, is no way to do business.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennard. What I was going to say to Commissioner Schleba is that the flooding out there is so dire now that every square foot of additional impervious surface matters. And that's why it was written the way it was. Mr. Howard, did you want to bring, I see Mar...
Marcelo.
And I think that's what Marcelo is going to tell you, is every square foot matters at this point.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, I was listening as best I could, so let me try to, what, can you repeat the questions or comments?
I had asked if it could be tabled to fine-tune it so we didn't have to wordsmith it on the dais.
I have never seen a situation like this in over twenty years. I've done a lot of permitting in the private sector and for other public agencies. This is a very difficult situation to walk into and say there's a lot of answers here. I feel bad for the residents. Any impervious area that's added anywhere at the top of the hill is impacting everybody downstream. There is not an engineering system out there. There's no road, there's no pond, there's... I've interviewed a lot of staff. This is a very difficult situation. So, we put this language in place to potentially help or to not make the situation worse. We do need some other infrastructure out there. It's going to be very expensive. I've talked to colleagues about the engineering study that was done. I tell you, it's going to be a lot more money today than what they put in that report a few years ago. This is not easy, so I think that's why we said all impervious area. A shed, a ten by ten is a hundred square feet, a driveway. Yes, this is a very difficult burden to carry. But I, in the best interest of the community out there, this is a potential solution that is temporary. I hope that we're going to figure out the other things down the road with these other agencies get involved.
Thank you. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thank you. I didn't get that from you yesterday, I'm sorry. You probably said it, I just didn't get it.
Anytime Commissioners, I'm here for you.
Commissioner Baze, I think, wants to...
Marcelo, thank you for your work on this. I know this is a very heavy lift. What is your recommendation, or how do we prevent any further development out there at this point? We have what we have, and until we figure this out, is can we stop issuing permits until, and not letting more building go on on the lots at the top, which causes more drainage to the bottom?
I think you have this language in front of you. It impacts the people at the top of the hill because their stormwater is impacting people down the hill. So, it is a community, and they are all impacted. I am concerned, this language is a hundred-year storm event. That is a very, this, by the way, is language that we put on commercial developments that are enclosed basins. So, we're not willy-nilly with this language. I've used this, I've permitted with this language. So, a hundred-year storm event's pretty standard. You all heard this morning about the hurricane, the five-hundred-year storm events, what I think. I take this stuff serious. And so, I think this is a good, you know, solution right now. While we figure out all the legal ramifications down the road, who's going to have to pay for whatever infrastructure? Because we really do need a lot more infrastructure out there. But I think that we table that for the future. This is a stopgap that the attorney and I have really worked through to try to do the best we could.
So, as I understand it, this is exactly what we use on very small commercial lots, that they have to maintain their own stormwater. They put these same type tanks in to retain their stormwater.
Commercial lots, suncoasts, those big ponds out there, this is a hundred-year storm event typically. We have great soils. And so, you know, yes, this is pretty standard across the board. That's why we added a lot of swift mud language in the code. So, all engineers that do drainage and stake are very familiar with this kind of language. This isn't new. So...
So, what's happening then is the, it's a very sandy soil substance at the top, which percolates, runs downhill, and is the, at the base where we're talking about where the waters would ultimately settle. Is that more clay? Or do you know?
I haven't looked at the quarry report, but I just went out there last week with my staff. And yeah, up the hill was pretty dry, and down at the bottom was still soupy wet. And I don't want to make any other potential challenges for those existing residents that are at the bottom of the hill. So, yeah, every shed, generator pad, everything matters here, every square foot. Just, you know, this is how we do drainage design.
So, then would it be a fair assumption to say that we should never lay any asphalt on the roads?
I think you, I think that's hard to say because we don't have an engineering system. When I do asphalt, I'm always having a pond with it. Drainage and roads go together. And then treatment, that's a whole nother conversation. But if you're near the coastline, I'm looking at water quality. Right here, we're just dealing with attenuation or the storage of the big storm events. So, we, you know, if it's done responsibly with an engineering design, yeah, we could do asphalt roads in the future. We got to have a pond somewhere if you're going to go down that road.
Would it be more prudent to lay the honeycomb base and gravel it so that it would have better...
Those may be viable options. I do know, talking with my staff, the soils vary out there from the bottom, which is like what we'd call a dehydrologic soil. Moving up, you have A, B, and C. So, you know, that's why when people are at the top of the hill and the water disappears, they got good soil down at the bottom, they don't have good soil. So, yes, those are viable options with the right soil. So, that's why you really need an engineer in the beginning with a good site design. And then my staff reviews those, and that's what we do.
And is the engineer, is this something that you're recommending that we outsource? And get an engineering report? Or is this something that you're wanting to do intern, get an engineer and do it internally?
At this time, I'm not recommending, unless you guys make it a project down the road.
No.
No, okay. I only typically work on your projects where you give me a budget.
He sounded like a husband to four women down there.
I'm like, wait a minute. I'm like, wait a minute, we're, let's stick to the ordinance here.
Well, I think you, I, I, I think this is part of the problem, Commissioner Kennard, is that we've talked about this in individual silos. We've never talked about it in totality and looking at the long-range plan. I'm not interested in fixing this today and then having them come back to us and say, gee, by the way, what about our roads? I mean, I, to me, it's important to have all these answers to know what the next step is, and, you know, that, that's part of the issues. I think they want answers, we need answers. So I like the project. I think, I think it's probably the, what little bit I do know about this, I think, and kudos to you, Holly. There's no easy solution to this, and-
This is not an easy solution. I also know it would be a very big challenge to get a professional engineering firm in here and tell you they're gonna have all the answers. I mean, it, so, it's not-
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Okay, thank you.
Could you tell the public, and especially the neighborhood, more about the containment system?
It, it's really storing any type of, you know, rainfall that would be collected on the roofs, through the gutters. You'd, you'd put them in a, in a stormwater containment unit, typically underground.
Sort of like a septic tank, right?
Yeah.
Only it's for stormwater.
Yeah, and it would need to be sized for this designed storm event, so.
100-year and just their own lot size, correct?
That's the target.
Which is a third of an acre. So it, that kind of containment system would dramatically, I believe, if a lot of them adopted it, would dramatically move us towards a solution.
I think it will help.
The flooding just makes everything untenable. Yes, ma'am?
Just to get respect to my question that, I don't know, maybe we could get an answer now with you. If the roads were left dirt roads, how they are now, could there be, instead of everyone getting individual rainwater containment, stormwater containment, could the neighborhood do it and be MSBU just for a better drainage system for the entire neighborhood?
I think that, well, first of all, we, we're not at the stage where we maintain the right of way right now. So they would need to have an engineer help them to do that, to size all that volume. And so it's really hard when you're dealing with one resident. There, there's a lot of options here. If they were an HOA or a small governmental agency, then they can hire the engineering firm to give them the design. Because ultimately, you're gonna have a lot of different options, and there's gonna be big costs all across the board, so.
Well, we did have somebody go out, was that not an option? Did we not see any of that information?
The engineering study that was done last year?
Yeah, we paid, and they came up with the 100 and something thousand dollar MSBU, but that was for roads and drainage, buying out homes. I'm just saying plain, not roads, universal drainage for the community, because I wanted to see if we had a price on that comparable to what they would be paying individually.
Yeah, I have, have limited information on what the study was done and how far in-depth. I know they, they proposed ERAs and that they were, at that time, able to work for those properties. But the costs would have to all be updated, and so I, you know, trying to do my best here, trying to give us a solution for this moratorium without getting in and taking over this project as the engineer record, you know what I mean?
I have another question because we haven't talked about it. We have an "or" on here to extend the current hold on permits. And every time we do that, I ask to what end? So if we didn't pass the ordinance and we extended it, we don't see on here how long or what would be accomplished in the meantime? And I don't know if we ever changed that to just new building permits, so they could still get permits for changeouts, generators, plumbing, things like that.
Legal wanna respond to that?
I, I don't, was that a question? You said, I don't see this on here.
Yes, but my question was, to, to what end? What will be accomplished if that was the, I don't know which way the board's going, but we haven't talked about the "or." So to what end? What are we gonna accomplish in the meantime? What is the next date? And is that just for new building permits, not inclusive of emergency permits or changeouts?
I think it was the board that entered the stop work, the stop permit. So I think it would be up to the board to determine to what end and what, how the board wanted to move forward. That's, staff didn't come up with that idea.
My, my understanding is that emergency replacements, like a new air conditioning and whatnot, are routinely approved.
I, I don't know what's routinely-
That's my, that's my understanding, is if it's that sort of thing, it's, it's done.
I, I mean, you guys, the board is who entered the order to, or the directive to stop issuing permits. So I, I guess it would be your colleagues that would answer that question.
Well, if that was happening, again, to what, so what would be accomplished in the meantime? If that's on here as an "or," so I don't know if I'm-
I guess staff would continue to explore alternatives. If you didn't like this alternative.
But I, I am in agreement with Commissioner Kennard that this is, there is a larger picture on this ordinance, and that is to also keep this from happening in other areas of the county. And so we need a way for sort of rogue developments to be required to contain their own storm water. So that has been floated as well. And just like to remind everyone that once upon a time, there was a $11,000 per lot MSBU back in 2012, and the majority landowner blocked it. So Commissioner Kennard, would you like to make a motion? We need the first one, which is, we can, we can-
I still have the floor.
I'm trying to move this along, can you?
But I still have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Something that you just said, because you said this could affect, so we don't have another IV4 situation, but it seems like this was pointing out, and I just got an updated one literally before I walked in, so I read the other one. But it specifically says under A3, Inverness Village Unit 4. So is there somewhere in here, I'll ask Madam Attorney, where this may pertain to other things beyond? I only see waterfront and then Inverness Village 4.
Absolutely not. It only applies to Inverness Village 4. That is the only thing at this time that it applies to. I believe what Commissioner Davis might have been referring to is that maybe in the future, you all might consider doing this in other areas, but absolutely not this only applies to Inverness Village 4.
Correct. We're moving in that direction to Commissioner Kennard's point. I would like us to pass this ordinance today to put these protections in place, to ensure that the flooding does not get worse, and then we will improve on our work.
Madam Chair, given that we're passing an emergency ordinance, does this need to be opened up to a public hearing, or no?
The fir-, the fir-, the first step, because we are passing this as an emergency ordinance, is to motion and vote to adopt it as an emergency, which would alleviate the need for the 10-day notice in the paper. It was noticed on Saturday in the paper, it was published, I have the proof of publication, but this just covers you so that you can waive the 10-day notice requirement. So that's the first step, is to, to motion and vote for that.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to waive the notice requirements for adoption of an emergency ordinance, finding that an emergency exists necessitating the immediate enactment of the ordinance.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Kennard, anybody like to second it?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bays. Do I open that portion to public? I don't think so.
Not that portion. And that has to pass by four-fifths in order for it to be effective.
Is there any board discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, three-two, so it fails.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
We just made a motion to waive the 10-day, but we did not, this can still be worked on, correct? This ordinance?
No. You, you just voted it down.
The emergency order.
We had, we had to waive it to be able to discuss it further. However, we can still do the moratorium? Because that's not an ordinance. I had it as a placeholder from the beginning, so it should have been in there.
The, the moratorium will automatically expire on April 15th unless you all take any action between now and April 15th. This is your last scheduled meeting before April 15th. So you would have to schedule a, an emergency, or an emergency meeting or a special meeting or something before April 15th. Or you would have to vote today to-
We, we should be able to, we should be able to vote on a moratorium continuance.
The stop permit issue, yes.
Or the stop permit issue, yes. We can do, that was the "or," right?
Yes, that was the "or."
That's not covered by the emergency declaration failure.
Yes, ma'am, correct.
That's what my question was. So, Board, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to extend the current permit hold for an additional 30 days. Is that enough to? 60 days. I make, like to make a motion to extend the current permit hold for an additional 60 days.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleball, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment?
I, I would like to speak after they speak.
Of course.
Hi, Carleen Sumpert, IV4. As time goes on, we just get more upset, as you know. And I was commended for always being professional for coming up here, but I'm really glad that you brought up that it's our fault that we bought in the subdivision. I did my due diligence, and I'm tired of people saying you should have done your due diligence and you should have done your research. I did. I have an email that went specifically to the Public Works Department asking if it flooded in there. Reason I ask that is because I just lost my house in Hurricane Ian, okay? And I have a response from your Public Works Department saying, as of this date, there has been no flooding on East Maryland Street. So you know what? If she would have told the truth, I would not have bought an IV4. Now, my second question is, we're paying for this now by this whole new ordinance that you came up with. Great, and I agree with your new Public Works Director. He seems like an intelligent guy, I'm not gonna knock him. I have never in my life heard of anything like this ever happening in my 30 years in government. The county violated its own land development code by issuing one single permit in Inverness Village 4. You violated it.
No, no, no. Can we get the deputies in here, please?
At our special assessment meeting or the proposed MSBU meeting, Chairman, you told us to lawyer up while we're on our way. Thank you. Oh, yep, sorry. Oh, I just have one more thing, my time's still going. I want an answer to the question, why you violated your own land development code by issuing permits and ignoring the storm water management portion of your land development code. Please.
Could you hang out in here? We're just having unruly crowd that lets of cheering and jeering. It's those that are seated that are not quiet, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Jill Saffra Rivera. I live at the higher part of 4398 East Staples Street, and I did apply for a permit for a generator. I have a medical issue, I need air 24/7. And from what I understand, the hurricane's gonna be pretty bad this year. I cannot be without air, and I would appreciate it if you can at least make that exception and let me put my generator up. Thank you.
Can someone with growth management or get with her to find out if she qualifies for emergency permit?
Yes, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Janine Edie, Inverness Village is 4. Thank you for voting against this right now because at this point, it just puts an additional financial, emotional, stressful burden on all of us that are already in there. We live it every single day. We are there every single day, we know what's happening. And putting in those water containment, I agree with DeeDee from before. We've already got septic in our, on our lands. They're already failing. You put that in there now too? I mean, all we're doing is adding more and more there, and what about the houses that don't have anything to put up? So now that land just sits there with nothing on it? I mean, it, it, and it still doesn't do anything for the infrastructure and putting it in there, the drainage in there in the long run. I mean, it's so piecemeal, and it doesn't look at anything that we need. And I would like to know, since you do continue to violate your own land development code, when I bring it up on your website and why I can't print it in its entirety, I can look at everything but Chapter 6, the Storm Water Management chapter. I can't print that, I can't look it up, I can't even pull it up because it's not available. It's not highlighted with a blue "pull it up." It's the only chapter in your whole land development ordinance that cannot be brought up, storm water management. Imagine that.
Ma'am, can I have a speaker's part?
Yes.
Gwen Barn, IV4. I only want questions answered, and I can't get an answer. My question would be, who do I go to for the answer? We hear blanket statements. He was, they were grandfathered in. We couldn't control this, we couldn't control this. You look at your land development code, it says if it was platted prior to your land development code, if it was platted prior to swift mud regulations, that they would have to go back. You can't, you can take a platted land from '72 that was platted for residential homes, 50 years later, go to build those homes, if the county's changed that zoning to only apartments, you can't hold them up from building those houses because it was zoned for that. But you can go back in. Your land development code states that. If I'm misinterpreting that, where do I ask my questions? Because you keep saying grandfathered. We couldn't control this, we didn't know this was going on. But there's a section in Chapter 10 that explains what a previous platted land has to do in order to meet today's standards. Why do I have to have hurricane windows in my house? Why was I given a blow test? That wasn't done in '72, but they've changed the Florida statute. So he had to, they had to comply with that. So my question's not being answered. Saying he's, they are grandfathered in, the county didn't have to do this. I just want the questions answered. I did my due diligence. When I purchased my land, there was nothing on Google about IV4, nothing. Not the previous, the other residential area with the red roofs, they weren't on their, on their situation they had because they had a similar situation. The next thing I want to bring up, you say that any, any concrete that we put in there, if we pour a pad for a generator, it's gonna affect the flow. But I'm gonna, you're gonna issue a permit to pour a slab for a whole house if he puts this contraption in his yard. So that kind of contradicts what you're saying. You're saying, any, he's saying, any concrete, any, any impervious thing that's placed in this development now is gonna interfere with the drainage. But if I buy this high-dollar system and put it in my yard, I can pour a whole slab, forget about the other residents who are in there. And that's what's happened through- And that's what's happened through the whole history of IV-4. Everybody has thrown the blame on everybody else. And another question. How many in here has went and pulled their infrastructure when they went to buy a house? I really would like to know that because I've purchased many houses. I've built three houses. I never had to pull if the infrastructure was in. We all, every...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Enick. It's been kind of entertaining. I've been watching this whole process for months. And the only thing I can compare it to is watching someone try to put their underwear on after they put their pants on. That's what it's been like. Land use planning laws have been in effect here since the early 1970s.
Sorry, you need to address the Chair.
I'm sorry. Land use planning laws have been in effect here since the 1970s. I'm kind of insulted, and I understand that the people behind me are insulted, too, by the suggestion that they were ignorant for buying the property because of the situation. It's not unreasonable to expect that site development protocol was followed. It wasn't. It's not their fault. It's not your fault because you weren't here. But you signed up for this. And the people here deserve better than what they're getting. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, I've never insinuated ignorance. I've made any number of colossal mistakes in my own life, and it happens.
I am Ulysses Ramirez. I live at 4444 East Ravina Street. New owner. I get directly impacted by the water that comes downhill. I'm just wondering if any of you, all five of you, are aware that property lines don't meet? Why isn't a trench behind the houses like they're done in Fort Pierce, Port San Lucy, and every place that has this problem? It's the same problem, and you guys are ignoring it. It's that easy fix. Easy fix. And you guys are sitting here hiring people to go look at things and give some survey and do this, do that. It's a trench behind the houses. It's not on our property line. It follows the water to the lake or to the canal, and it gets it out of our way. Have any of you even been out there? Have you looked at the property lines?
Point of order.
No, you haven't. No, you haven't.
Yes, I have, many times. Next speaker.
Marie Williams, I live on Crestio. My point is, someone had to know something. We have 162 completed homes in Inverness Village 4. We have 75 homes that are incomplete, that the structures are up. Now, we are paying, I know Citrus County can't pay for the whole fix. We don't ask them to pay for the whole fix. But we are property owners, and we pay taxes. Our taxes average from between $1,800 to $3,000 per lot in our subdivision. So we are paying our fair share. We need help. This is going to look like Lehigh Acres. This is a black eye to Citrus County. And honestly, you want growth? With all the information that's out there now, and what's in the paper, and what's on the news, people do not want to move here. So this is a black eye on you for letting this happen.
Next speaker.
Casey Worthman, IV-4. Commissioner Davis, I appreciate all the stuff that you've done. I really do. But please don't insult all of us by saying that we screwed up by buying there. That's really kind of out of bounds. Now, as far as our land goes, I've been up here before saying, "I'm fine. I'm up high." But all the people that are down, they're losing, their entry to their driveways are washing away. I mean, houses are just like getting destroyed by all of this. And the rain we had the other day, holy moly's. I mean, I had a pond in my front yard. The problem is, or maybe it's a solution, why wouldn't we all just put culverts in the front of our yards? The water seems to drain down pretty quickly once the rain stops. I know we did that in Michigan, and we all had to pay X amount. I think it was 10 grand over 10 years. And they came in, the county did, put the culverts in. Life is good. You pay. It's not a complete fix for roads, obviously, but why can't we get somebody to come in and grade the roads and at least put some stone down? Because that'll keep some of it from flowing all the way down the hill. I mean, our road is pretty good for about half of it, and then it starts to go away. But there's got to be something. It's just, I don't know. I read in the paper that Ocala was putting together some new subdivision, and all of the infrastructure and all of the roads were going to be put in before the development like it should be. So why is it that our development was allowed to be built without that? That just doesn't even make any sense. I mean, I'm from California and Michigan. You have to have roads and drainage and everything there before you even build a house. So either this state is messed up, their laws are screwy, or people were just pushing through permits to get a bigger tax base. And I know it's not all of you, but darn it. There's got to be a way that you guys can help us fix this. And it's not 109,000. It's not 40,000. We were told 6 grand. Once 3/4 of your street gets built, it'll cost everybody $6,000 to put in the road, blah, blah, blah. Okay? Then color me ignorant, but going by other states that I've lived in and I've built new houses, this is just nuts. Somebody got away with something.
Commissioner Baze.
Can we answer that?
Yes.
I mean, I really, I think, in 1972, it was a development. The development failed. It was no longer. Then it became MARPAD. And what happened after that, it was no longer a development. It became lots. That's part of the confusion, I think, that's going on is that the development ceased to exist, and it's just lots. And everybody went in and purchased lots. That's the reason there's no roads, there's no infrastructure, there's no nothing, is because everybody owns an individual lot. It's as if you went out in the country off of a dirt road, and you bought a lot. That's exactly the same difference because there is no development. The development ceased to exist. Is that an accurate statement, Attorney Lynn?
Yes. My understanding is it is.
Madam Attorney, is that a correct statement?
I'm sorry, Carlton was, talk to me. Which, that it's not a development anymore?
Yes. In 1972, it was a development. The development went bankrupt, and then MARPAD came in, and it became lots. It's no longer a development?
It's a subdivision with individual lots.
But there's a big difference between subdivision and development on, for the roads and the infrastructure?
I don't draw a distinction between those.
Oh, my God.
It's, we call it the developer who's not a developer because he presents himself as a developer, but he's not. We cannot hold a permit for lack of another permit. That's the other part of that equation. This board was brave enough to risk the county being sued and halted permits a year ago. We can't do that ad infinitum. So that's why we are where we are. I have never, ever insinuated that any of you are ignorant or stupid or anything like that. There are some really smart people that I've talked to and met in IV-4. Never insinuated that at all. Anybody ever buy a lemon car? I have. Did I make a mistake? Yep. Did I have legal recourse? As it turns out, I didn't because I thought it was a lemon, but there wasn't enough lemons. You guys bought a lemon. That's all I'm trying to say. You do hopefully have legal recourse through the FDLE investigation of those who sold you that.
Madam Chairman.
But I would say that that was a mistake. We all make mistakes. Pardon?
Madam Chairman, point of order. We have a motion on the floor and a second.
And we need to continue to the public. That's, I just wanted to clear some of this up. Next speaker.
John Drum, Inverness Village 4, I guess. I live the north side of Bennett, across from the red, what you call, red roof houses, okay? I'm a little confused on really how I'm really involved within the flooding zone down there. I mean, everybody says it starts at the top of the hill. I'm north of that. By a quarter mile. And I'm getting impacted by the county's decisions here. Their lack of decisions by not, your building department failing to request site approval and everything. Back the old stories, you know? Permits weren't requested for roads, and storm water drainage plans weren't submitted. I've asked for those. What was included in, I guess you'd call it Phase 1, where the red roofs are? What roads were included? You left out Cunningham between Arlington and Bennett. For whatever reason, I have, no, it's a main access to that neighborhood. And then I asked for the permit, were permits submitted for below, I guess, the south side of Bennett? And I think your name is Vicki Austin, I believe? Your records department? I paid for the report on that, and she said, "We gave you everything." They didn't. They wouldn't tell me anything about permits, what was submitted for the homes where the flooding department problems are. But yet, they say they gave me everything that I asked for, and they don't. Your building department? I'm sorry, you've got a problem. A big problem with your people. They don't answer questions. Prior people to you let things get out of hand on what can be built here. You didn't even answer the question about the grants that were, you were supposed to be talking to the city about, about getting this done. You said you were going to answer that question. You haven't.
We will as soon as open to the public is closed, and I'll have Mr. Howard speak to that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Don Martin, Inverness Village is 4. First off, you say it's not a development now. You buy the individual lots. You still have to follow codes if you build anything on a lot, correct? Okay. Number two, now you want to say we need to put in these storage or storm water drainage containment systems. That's just more of a financial load on the homeowners now. And number three, okay, it was said something about we expect free roads and something about putting it on the rest of the county's taxpayers' backs. Let me be clear. We are not in here asking for the residents of Citrus County to pay for our roads. What I was told, and many of my community neighbors were told, I asked the man, when I bought the lot, when do they pave the roads? When your street's finished, they paved the roads. And yes, they did reference the $6,500 figure, which I understand that's more now. Nothing was said about infrastructure. I'm willing to pay for the paving of my road, but I don't think we're liable for the infrastructure.
Ross Frederickson, Inverness Village is 4. I just want to make a little clarification because I've done this before. There is a difference between a lot, a parcel of land versus a development. When you buy a parcel of land, you want to build a home. You have to have power brought in. You have to dig your own well. You're responsible for your own septic system. This is a development. IV-4 is a development that Citrus County approved. They brought in the water, okay? They brought in the power, and they also inspected the septic systems. IV-4 is a development, not a parcel of land per owner. Plain and simple. Once again, Citrus County knew this was a development. You allowed, utilities come into this development. So I'm sick and tired of saying you didn't know what was going on, that it wasn't a development. You know it's a development, plain and simple. Back to, and I heard it, the best thing I've heard all day. The gentleman referenced, in 20 years, he has not seen such a debacle in his life. That's from your own professional for the county. Why has he never seen anything like that before? Because he's never dealt with Citrus County. You guys failed us, plain and simple, and I'm tired of it. So, to reduce all my stress, I went to Panda Express, okay? Your biggest battle will be won with the help of others, okay? Our others, and I hope our listening audience, the people in this room, the media, okay? We need a land use attorney to represent us. There's over 250 people, single homeowners, okay? And we need legal representation to call out the faults that this county created. Have a good day.
No. I would like to point out that Phase 1 went to court, and the county prevailed, just so you know. Go ahead. Doctor.
Hi, I'm Dr. Carmen Kubicek, Inverness Village 4. Good afternoon. I would like to, Commissioner Davis, thank Commissioner Shabok and Commissioner Finnegan for their questions. Everyone here is mentioning storm water, infrastructure, and so forth. You want to pass an ordinance, and no one has mentioned SWF mud. My understanding is that they're the ones that we have to be in compliance with. So was this even discussed with them? Did your madam attorney discuss this with SWF mud? Is this even legal? Okay? I want to know that. Are we responsible if this ordinance goes through and putting this containment on getting an ERP? Are we responsible for that? I'm not hearing any answers. I question, you mentioned that you had something going on where possibly there's going to be a reduction from 100,000 maybe to 40,000. But you wanted to pass this ordinance without first finding out if that was even doable. I'm really disgusted with the whole situation. I think a lot of the residents have thought about this, and I really regret buying into this county. I really do. Have a nice day.
Dean Eganong, Inverness Village 4. You're talking about things that you can do for permits that are not, things that are not built. In the meantime, every time it rains, the flooding gets worse. Even if it wouldn't be a solution for, a permanent solution, couldn't we do something with grading and ditches that would maybe retain some water? Something that would put the water that's going to run anyway in a better place? Because right now, it runs, our property is fine, but it runs on each side of our property. It runs from across the street down the hill. And the water's going to run. Can't we just send it in the right direction to help the people whose homes are being destroyed?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Reese Vance, I know you guys love me. So here's all I have to say. You've had this moratorium for a year. There's been no transparency as far as like, how many meetings have you had with Anton Venison? How many meetings have you had with Vanderwach? None? How many meetings have you guys had privately? None? A year. A year. A year. So here's what's going to happen. Come November, when I go to vote, and I hope everybody in here does, and the TV stations know, you do not get my vote, missy. Thank you.
We're not allowed to meet privately, it's a sunshine law. Yes, ma'am?
Brenda Killian, Ivy Four. We live on the top of Taper. And yes, our property gets flooded badly. My mother spent her whole life savings on this home and wanted it to be her last home. And it's just been a disaster. Every time it rains, our property is washing down the hill into the neighbors' yards. Like three, four houses below us. It's ridiculous. And we've got big, deep ravines in the back of our property. And it just keeps washing away more and more and more. And we get ankle-deep water around one side of our house where it goes down. And it's coming from the street and from the neighbors right down in our yard. Thank you.
All right, Curtis Bryant Legganto. So with the ordinance, I see it was tabled today or not voted for. That doesn't stop you guys from pursuing that again in the future with the 10-day notification. I will caution you with that because I don't see how it benefits anybody. Yes, it would stop current building, new buildings, things like that, but it doesn't fix the current issues that are in place. If you build zero houses, zero roads, anything like that going forward, there's still drainage issues ongoing, even if you were able to stop all of that. Number two, I know that there's issues with the state, the DEP, different lawsuits, things like that, that you guys are kind of waiting for it to play out. But I don't see what the enforcement action is on that. Let's say that he's found guilty. The DEP has a civil lawsuit out there which would result in fines, things like that. Let's say the state pursues something with the, the state level. Everyone's found guilty, convicted, whatever, there's no enforcement action available to them. Most of these are LLCs, so they can just dissolve the businesses and again, the issues aren't addressed going forward. So I push you guys to look for alternative solutions. I mentioned earlier today about an opportunity possibly to create drainage out there for Ivy Four using MSBU system. And Ms. Finnegan asked questions about it and wasn't answered. My understanding is there are drafts in place with your engineering department that has done that portion of it. The drainage issues, things like that, they've addressed those without doing the paving. So I ask you guys to go to your staff and look for different alternative options that would make it a little bit cheaper for the residents to get the drainage fixed. Because again, all these things that we're doing, yes, it's stopping new growth. Yes, it's stopping new construction, but it's not alleviating the current issues that they're seeing out there for this. So thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. This is, I'm Kathy Yen from Ivy Four. First thing, I want to thank you for creating a dedicated page for Ivy Four. I'm not sure if everybody in the community is aware of that. I don't know if you're still using the email chain notifying any news regards to Ivy Four. I went up there and I'm, I just feel like if there's any other news, you can update it. That would help us a lot because we're all Ivy Four people on the same boat. But a lot of times we might not be on the same page on everything, all the decisions that's been made. I just feel like different people want different things at different times, depending on their situation. But we're all, one thing that we all want is passable roads and hoping that our house is not being flooded. That's, everybody wants that. So, but anyway, since I've been involved last year, towards the end of last year, I just noticed that all the decisions being made, everybody, all the things that's been talked about, it seems like we're just running around in circles. We're back to square one, that's how I feel. And the decisions that were made, they're like Band-Aids and not even a good ones. I, I don't know. I'm just hoping that there's a long-term solution to Ivy Four as a whole and not just putting Band-Aids on one part of it and then destroying the others. That's how I feel. So I'm hoping we have a more comprehensive plan to help Ivy Four as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for the dedicated page. Hopefully there are more details on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. I've been sitting through these meetings and there's a lot of discussion on this, that and the other. And I continue to wonder, Citrus Springs is a PUD. It's not a subdivision. In the PUD, they had to put in all the roads that they were going to be building houses on. Habitat for Humanity was made to put in all of the roads and the sewers and the water and everything before one house was even started. I also know that the new rules say that the house has to be at least one foot above the crest in the road. How can you allow them to build an Ivy Four if there is no crest in a road? Okay, in order to get a permit, you have to show the elevation on your plans and things. And it has to show that it's going to be one foot above the crest in the road. Now you've been worried about these, you know, drainage. I agree with that lady that said, put in, you know, a ditch. You've got easement. You're not putting in sidewalks there. In parts of Citrus Springs, they don't have fancy drains, but they have these thing that's, like it's dirt that they've dug out, they put a grade over it. And that's where our water goes, because not everybody's going to have a DRA in their area. And we get a lot of rain. Inverness actually gets more than we do, I think, because it could be raining in Inverness and it's dry by Citrus Springs. But you have to realize, these people are suffering. They don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars. When they did the MSBU and said that they were going to charge the residents of Citrus Springs to redo the roads and it was going to be an MSBU, that's when we found it was over $100,000 a mile to do, because you got to rebuild the road. If you got to rebuild the road and they don't have a road, you're rebuilding it. I would tend to think that one mile of road is going to cost a million dollars. And you start putting that quarter of an acre, that's ridiculous for these poor residents. So whatever you come up with, please take your time. 60 days may not be enough to get it correct. But what you said today about turning down this ordinance, it was a good thing to turn it down. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I just have a couple of, I have one, one question comment and another comment. Anyone who has not let, read the four or five-page letter to the Attorney General, please do so because it has the entire, all the details encapsulated in that. I do believe that there's a lot of energy in this room and it could possibly be better used to work together to find a solution. When I say you made a mistake, yes, but the letter clearly states, and I believe the first paragraph, that it is a common scheme to defraud. And it was not the county. The county is the easy target because we're up here every other week and you can come in and yell at us, but we're not the ones that per, did this to you. So, that's all I got. I'm going to take a little break. Would you like to take over for a moment, Commissioner Baze? Well, we need to close, we need to, board, board comment, board comment, vote, and then E-12.
All right, any board comments? Yes, Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, I'll answer the, the question that has come up about the communications with the City of Inverness. Those communications, my understanding is that they are continuing. It's not going to be a fast process. But both parties are very interested in finding something out there. Some type of grant opportunity with the state that, or, or federal money, either one that would allow us to move forward and ultimately would help to reduce the cost to the homeowners in, in building the roads and the, and the stormwater, stormwater system out there. It's my understanding, I was, I was outside the room at the time, but it's my understanding that the motion on the floor is to extend the moratorium for another 60 days. I hope that this fails. Voting to support this continuance, I believe, puts the county at greater risk of litigation. And I will not be supporting it. I do want to see the city and county continue to work together to find a solution. Continuing this moratorium at this point is not that solution.
Commissioner Slava.
You know, I, I thought this was a good idea until I heard about the, the pads for the generators and a pool and thing, things that would hold up the existing homeowners that are there right now. That's why I didn't support it. I did a 60-day because I have said for over a year that if there's any case that needs to be, has to go before a judge, it's this case. The county, I've only been here three years, so when you say that, when you point your fingers at us, I'm not taking that personally. We, we weren't here when this was done. We were not the ones that told you that it was going to cost $6,000 once your street was built. I don't actually know who told you that, but I think four or five of you said that, came forward and said, hey, we were told if, once the street is built out. Thank you, you're not, no, okay. It wasn't the county that said that. And that you are in a situation where you were defrauded. So Commissioner Kennard says he's not going to support this 60-day moratorium. I need some more time to go over with the staff to see if, what we can do. I was given less than a few days to read all this and that's not enough time for me to even process, that's why I wasn't going to support it. But I, I don't know what to do other than, you know, have a judge decide how we correct this because this has been going on so long. And it, just because we can't talk privately. We, one of the ladies said, oh, how many meetings have you had? I'm not meeting with the developer because there's potential lawsuit there. I can't go as a commissioner and meet with, well, I guess he's not a developer, the non-developer. So, you know, there's so many emotions coming at us, but please know that we also want to try to figure this out. We don't want you to go through this. We want your, your time to be here, but staff didn't do this to you either. And there's a lot being thrown out and about, but let's, let's try to figure something out and that's why I wanted 60 days. But if it fails, I don't know what else to say. I don't know what else to do. I'll meet again privately as one commissioner with staff and try to come up with some ideas. That's, that's all I can do.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I am going to support the 60 days. That's why I voted to second this motion. The ordinance was rushed. I don't think it's good policy for us to approve things in such a rushed manner when it affects so many people. And when I look out in the audience, I see the thumbs down, like pretty much saying, please don't pass this because this is supposed to be an effort for you. I didn't really like the moratorium two times ago. I always say, to what end are we doing this? But I've kind of taken the backseat. It's not my district, people were working on it. They, we needed the moratorium to work on certain things which have been accomplished. Commissioner Davis made sure that the letter got to the Attorney General, things are being worked on. But whether the 60 days passes or not, I will be meeting with staff and starting to talk about drainage without roads because I think it's been part of a package deal. And I see that drainage is so much more important to you than just having paved roads. I think the ordinance could potentially harm instead of help. But again, this was a very rushed thing and I wouldn't want to injure anyone just because we're in such a hurried state. I don't think we need to be. So I will approve, or at least cast my vote to say yes on the 60 days, just to work through some of these things. And I will be asking more about drainage and make another visit out there. And maybe some of you can help me see exactly how the waters are flowing, maybe per map, so I can have an even better understanding. I've been out there and I see the ruts, but it seems to be a little bit after the fact, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baze, you want to weigh in?
Yes. I guess I'm directing this smart staff. Is there any way to look at an MSBU for maintenance?
I can get with staff on that. I mean to explore it.
I mean, that may be, it's not going to solve the problem, but it may be.
Turn, maybe want to say something too.
That's been explored and shot down in the past, but I, you know, I'm clearly.
Everything else is shot down too. All right, I'm turning it back over to you, Chair.
I am not going to support the 60-day permit hold. I, I agree with Commissioner Kennard. It is, it's been a year. We have to move on, so I'm not going to support that. And I would support doing an emergency meeting before April 15th if some of my colleagues can get up to speed on the ordinance and want to do that. That's where I am.
I'd be happy to do, you know, attend an emergency meeting.
I strongly recommend against doing a permit hold at this time for legal reasons. Anything further from the board?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan?
It, it's different now for these 60 days and not the, all the 90 and 60 days that we've done it. It seems like there's always been some slight of a risk, but.
Yes.
Yes, the year mark.
Seems like we don't, we're not communicating our information well.
Commissioner Kennard?
Call the vote.
All right.
Move on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails, two, three.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
What is the protocol for us to get an emergency meeting together before April 15th? Isn't today the 13th? Or I mean the?
It's the 9th.
9th, any? Before April 15th.
Also, if we just addressed drainage, by the way, I meant to say this earlier, the drainage was the lion's share of the 109,000. So roads are a much smaller portion of it. The issue is the lots. And unless we can get the lots for free, it is an untenable cost.
Well, you just don't have anywhere to put the, the water. You don't have anywhere to, you, the county doesn't own any property upon which it can store or clean the stormwater. And clean isn't the correct word, but.
Swift MUD has, has agreed that just contain would be fine. And we're also willing, the county is willing to pay some of its stormwater fees to help with part of the stormwater attenuation. But the net result was still 109,000 per lot as of a year or whatever ago. And that's a worst-case scenario. That's assuming three times market rate on the property that we needed for the DRAs. Again, I agree, I urge everyone to read or revisit the Attorney General letter because I spent a lot of time getting everything down and cross-checked with staff to make sure it was accurate. All right, moving on to E-12, yes?
To answer.
Oh, do you, I'm sorry.
Commissioners' question? So you have tomorrow or Thursday or Friday to schedule your emergency meeting? I don't know what y'all's schedules are like, but that's, when you say what's the process or the procedure, it will be finding a time when. Thursday is the only day that I could do it.
I, I can't. Because I'm in advanced commissioners.
If there was some language that commissioners wanted to come up with before the end of the meeting today, uh, I mean... I just, I, I agree that just a few days is not enough time to process what we need to do. And this is the problem with, I, I, I understand sunshine, I get sunshine, but none of us get to talk until we're here, and then you guys get to see us trying to work through it. And it's, it's also very difficult for us. So, okay, how about a workshop then? Can we get a workshop? Can we figure something out? This is...
I can do tomorrow afternoon.
I, I can do tomorrow afternoon. Well, four-fifths of you would have to agree to an emergency ordinance, so you need to have four-fifths of you. Okay, I'm sorry. I, I, tomorrow afternoon is not gonna give me enough time to get through and figure out the language, and then, I mean... Commissioner Finnegan, is there something we can do to help you be more comfortable about it? If Commissioner Schleba's saying she can't?
I can't be here tomorrow.
No, no, it's something we can do to the ordinance.
I, I understand the comments, and I agree. What, what's the difference tomorrow or today? So if the board wanted to do something today, I would find it'd be more feasible while we're all here. If the board wanted to do that, then take a recess, because I don't think tomorrow or the next day is gonna make much of a difference for processing. It's still this hurried thing, um, and that would be up to, up to the board. My problem with it is, it's still today, that gives us zero time to go out there, unless it's some heck of a recess, and, uh, talk to the residents, um, talk to Marcelo, talk to his staff. I mean, if y'all wanna pull it together, I mean, we, go home, get your PJs, we'll have a, uh, we'll have a pajama party and stay all night. I'm willing to put in the work, but it's going to take some time to, to get all that information, and I don't know if Mr. Howard can, can bring his, his team around quick enough. I mean, I've seen you work some magic, but I, I'd like to know...
Mr. Howard, was this part of everyone's briefings?
Yes, I think, uh, I think there was some discussions on it. Um, I know one commissioner did, we didn't meet in person, um, so I don't know how much information they got.
I didn't have a briefing.
Yeah, 'cause I said there's some, some of you had briefings and some didn't.
Yeah, that's a problem, because we need to go to our briefings, because I'm, I am trusting our new PE. He's a very impressive addition to the staff, and he believed that this is the right way to go, and so I'm, I'm not an engineer, um, and so I'm going with what he recommended. But I also got an in-depth briefing on the topic, so...
I mean, does anyone else wanna recess? I, you know, I could, I guess, if we did that, we would have to meet with him individually.
Right.
I don't know how we're gonna work that out, but...
We still have to get through E12. And Commissioner Kennard's items, and that's it, unless I'm missing something. Yes? Is that correct? Madam Clerk, we have E12 and Commissioner Kennard's items, and that's it till 5:01?
No. Yes, oh, yeah. Nevermind. Bye, ma'am.
Oh, boy. Thanks for bringing that up.
I agree that, I think that, I think that we need to have some kind of emergency meeting, and I would be happy to take a dinner break and come back and meet with these people and do this. I, you know, I'm, I'm okay putting in the hours, but I, I need more time. I was at a briefing, I asked these questions, I met, but there were some things I missed. And I'm sorry, you know, 20, 15 minutes on one subject, sometimes it's just not enough.
I understand. So, um, here's what I suggest. Hopefully, E12 is not gonna ta, the rest of it will not take a too much amount of time, and then we'll readdress that when we go into our normal recess before 5:01. Okay? Is everybody in agreement with that? E12?
Table eight, table eight.
We already, oh, that's right, we haven't voted for that. Um, yeah, I'll call the vote, well, we, do we already call the vote?
You call the, just, just...
Yeah, so two, three.
Table H7 until later in the meeting?
We've already voted on it, so how does it get tabled?
Twice.
Well, you haven't take, oh. You're absolutely right, so you're done with H7.
Yes.
Sorry.
So that's what I, that's why I need to know what the legal aspects are, if we could reopen that later in the day or call an emergency meeting. Why don't I, why don't I move on and you process that? Because this is already done. H7 is done, for now. So, E12.
Erin. Come forward, please.
E12, um, is the Law Enforcement MSTU and Road Resurfacing MSBU. This information, um, we had discussed previously. It was, we were asked to bring it back. It's part of the Alternative Revenue Funding Sources for the Strategic Plan. And discussions, um, with Public Works. Um, for the Road Resurfacing MSBU, we are, um, it's actually out to bid right now to have, um, some engineering services done regarding our roads. They believe it would be better to get this updated information before moving forward with the Road Resurfacing MSBU, um, because this is information we would need to provide. So that leaves the Law Enforcement MSTU. This would be through Neighbors Giblin. They would look at putting the ordinance together, as well as the analysis, um, for the Law Enforcement MSTU, basically what could be moved from, um, the general fund ad valorem onto its own line for a Law Enforcement MSTU.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move forward with an MSTU for the sheriff.
Second it.
And the Road Resurfacing MSBU?
Nope, we, that, um, staff made a recommendation that we, um, they feel it's best to get through this pavement assessment before we move forward with that, so...
That's right, thank you.
I would just move forward with, um, the sheriff MSTU for...
Just to double-check, that is correct, right? You just went with the first one? Okay. So, motion by Commissioner Bays for the Law Enforcement MSTU. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Sorry, I second it.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on this item?
And Chair, just to get clarification, that is A, the full verbiage of A.
Approve and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson to complete the work necessary to create the Law Enforcement MSTU.
Okay.
And, um, what are we doing with B, though?
Nothing.
Okay.
Janet Barak, Citrus Springs resident. I sat through some lengthy meetings, listening to about what MSBU and MSTU were, and it upset me. You wanna take a tax and change it to an MSTU so that you, on the board, can decide how much every citizen pays. You can decide how often it gets raised. It means it'll never go down. It means the citizens are gonna be messed over, because that's what I heard when the lady said it's moved from the valorum to the non-advalorem, just like the MSBU that Citrus Springs has. It'll never go away, just like the MSBU that Beverly Hills has. It'll never go away. And you are the ones to decide how much it is, per thousand, not the residents. So I am really against an MSTU, because it makes it so that you can take and charge whatever you want. That's not right. That's not a budget. That's going and pushing it to somebody else. Because now, if you don't, if you don't wanna raise my millage, you know, my little thing, you just put it into a TU, and then my millage goes down. My millage goes down, but my taxes go up, 'cause now it's a TU. Now, I don't feel that that is right for any of you to be doing that to any of the citizens, no matter where.
And I believe you're not at all correct in your assumption. Erin, would you like to clarify that? It's trading one advalorem for another.
Right, so for the Law Enforcement MSTU, part of the analysis that would be done is what part of law enforcement or the sheriff's budget could be covered by the TU?
Which is also advalorem.
It is. It, it is a millage rate. Um, obviously, just like every other millage rate, it can change. So, um, there is a way for the ordinance to be written, that it either is included with our 10 mils, or it falls under a different 10 mil cap. So that is part of what will come back to the board, um, when Neighbors Giblin, um, puts that ordinance together.
Excellent, thank you. Provides for greater transparency on what the Sheriff Department is getting.
Right, and so there will be an analysis done regarding that budget, and again, what would be needed to fund that, that budget.
Excellent, thank you, Erin.
At the last BOC meeting, both Janet Barak and myself made the same request. This would solve the problem. I am requesting again that you place an amendment on the ballot for a one or a half percent sales tax. The amendment would state 1% sales tax to be used solely for the surfacing or resurfacing of existing roads only. This keeps the control that property owners aren't being hit with the burden constantly with changing, uh, the millage, et cetera. That way residents will know that it can't be used for anything else. My question is, why won't you put it on the amendment? What is the problem? It's, it's, the worst that can happen is it would get rejected again. But if it's there, you're leaving it to the citizens of this county to decide, do we wanna spread out the money that is being put into road servicing, not just to property owners, and not just the people that live here, but also to all the tourists that come in here, because they're gonna be spending money here, and there is sales tax on everything. So I would seriously look at the possibility of putting an amendment out there just for resurfacing, and that would solve all these problems of back and forth of the issue of, where's it gonna come from? How are we gonna make it up? Are we gonna shift from here to there? You solve that, you're putting it out to the general public to do. And I hope that you do take a serious look at that as a possibility, because I think that's what the residents would like to do, as it has changed from years ago, and the people that were here that knocked that amendment down, and you might see a different attitude now. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? And we'll close public comment. Commissioner Schleba?
Steve, I want you to listen to me now and hear me later. November 2020, first meeting here, I brought up discretionary sales tax. We were the only county that didn't collect it. December 2020, brought it up again, got laughed at, told, just ask Commissioner Kennard about that. January 2021, brought it up again, got lambasted. I have collected sales tax across the whole state of Florida for 35 years. I pay three, I collect, I pay three separate sales tax every month, 35 years. We needed a campaign. As commissioners, we can only educate. We need somebody to campaign. I tried those first three months. I tried through my whole campaign. I got lambasted. Janet Barak told me absolutely to my face she would never support the sales tax. I'm glad you're back on board. Mike Wright told me back, way back, he did not, he thinks sales tax was a good idea. He has now come around. It is an absolute tool that everybody in the state, 66 counties use. We're the only county that doesn't utilize it, so please listen to me. Uh, you're, this is not a new idea you're bringing up, okay? But the citizen, w, w, it, there needs to be a campaign. You know, Penny for Pasco, you know what they did? There were billboards. It was not a, a, oh, let's just put it on the ballot. There has to be a true campaign. That's why I wanted it in 2020, so it could be on the ballot in 2024. Here we are in 2024, and we're no closer. So, I'm sorry to get so frustrated, but where were you in November 2020 when I was begging for this? So let's, let's get together, let's find somebody that can lobby this, and, and, and then go from there. But it has to be an education. The community has to want this. And we're gonna come to a point where the, the state of Florida is gonna say, listen, Citrus, you're not utilizing all the tools in your toolbox. Why do we have to keep getting, giving you money if you're not even trying to collect discretionary sales tax? So that's, that's my rant. Thank you for coming today. Blessings to you.
What she said. Would anyone else like...
Read it.
Anybody else like to comment?
I'll make a couple comments. Um, you're right, we do need a sales tax, but I wouldn't do it for residential road resurfacing, I would do it for capacity. That would, that's where we would probably get a real hangup. Number two, uh, as far as an MSBU for law enforcement, I absolutely support this. I think it's a great...
TU?
TU, sorry. Um, I do support it. I think if you would look at Marion County, they're utilizing an MSTU for law enforcement. I think it is the most fair and equitable way. Every time you create a, a designated, uh, funding source, that is the only thing that it can be used for, it can't get spread out. I think if you in, implemented many of these, that we could literally get our millage down to around maybe four. Um, I think advalorem taxation is one of the most unfair taxations, because we have so many exemptions out of it, that, uh, what one person doesn't pay becomes another person's burden, and it's all based off the value of your house. So I am totally a proponent for MSTUs. I know some of that still falls in line, uh, the same as advalorem taxation, but this is something that whoever the sheriff is, he needs to go out and sell it. Right now, the sheriff is about 45% of our budget?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven percent of our advalorem taxation or collections? And our collections on advalorem, this year are equal to what they were in 2008. It's taken us that long to catch up from the Great Recession. So, you know, everybody acts like there's all this money rolling in, and there's not. We, we're just treading water. And I think this is, uh, the perfect example of why we need to go out, why we need to, um, let the law enforcement tell us what they need, and let them present it to the public, and, um, sell their own budget, because I, I don't, there's no way to keep pace. It's not a perfect world. There's, I read the paper today, there's, there's absolutely, you know, you can't, there's no way that you'll be able to fund public safety at that level. If our... If our population has only grown from 140,000 to 160,000, 20,000 people, and in that same period of time, you need 100 extra deputies? Tell me how the numbers work, because just the numbers, just to pay their salary and their benefits, is $100,000 a year, just under it. I'm not saying they're not worth it. I'm just telling you, I don't know how you physically do it in a, in a, in a manner that we can afford it. And you also have to outfit them and buy a car. And so when you add all those together, that first year out capital outlay is a couple hundred thousand dollars. And as much as we talked about that grant, that grant was, that gave us from the feds five-plus million dollars, if we looked at it over that five-year period, what it cost us, you, the taxpayers, is $25 million. And that is no salary increases, that's nothing on top of what the current budget is. So the public needs to decide what they're willing to pay. And that's why this is the perfect method to get it out there and let the public decide what they want to pay for law enforcement.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I will, I will support paying neighbors in Giblin to move forward and come back with a number for us for this MSTU for law enforcement. However, when it comes back, the only way that I will support implementing this is if it counts against our 10 mil cap. It cannot be outside of that 10 mil cap, and then just create additional room there to raise, to raise the millage rate by this board or another board down the road. So I'll go ahead and support this, so that we can get what that number is, and we'll see, see where that goes.
Commissioner Finnegan, you have anything?
Ditto.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's relatively painless. Okay, community reports, anyone?
Went to, you want me to start?
Sure.
Had the MPO meeting, I don't even, don't even know what day, Thursday. And just more good news. The revenue is declining on the gas tax. And a lot of the big trucking companies, they're going to alternate sources, you know, natural gas, electric. So projects are 50 to 70% more expensive compared to, and then compared to the 2045 plan that they had. There is a strategic intermodal system and a state highway system, and then what the revenue source is from FDOT, and it's just getting lower. I wasn't going to talk about this part, I was going to talk about some others, but my head is kind of full, so maybe Commissioner Kennard can, can wrap up the MPO meeting. I just felt like it's a little discouraging to know that the projects are going up and the revenue is going down. So just another, another great day in government.
Commissioner Kennard, would you like to?
I did the bad news, you did the good news.
She, she about summed it up. They, you know, that has been, that's been forecast for some time. And now the, the numbers of projections truly are dropping for gas tax funding, and so the conversation is slowly turning to, I expect to hear, hear about it at the MPOAC meeting at the end of the month. But yeah, the cost of, the cost of the projects are going up significantly, or is going up significantly, and the projected revenues are decreasing. I would say significantly, millions and millions of dollars. I don't have my notes right in front of me, but that was, that was the message of the day. We did talk about the possibility of a sidewalk along Independence. We have since, we've since found out that a portion of that right-of-way is, is the city, City of Inverness. Majority of that right-of-way is the counties. And that, that project was bumped up to the number two priority by the Citizens Advisory Council. And the, while the MPO has not yet approved that change in priorities, it's very likely that that will happen. The, currently, the top priority is with Cucci Trail. Once that project is, is completed, which DOT expected to be wrapping up fairly quickly, then they would move to the second priority project, which was this, this sidewalk on Independence. They don't yet have an application for that. I've spoken with the city, I've spoken with Wal Eastman about it, and DOT has expressed a willingness to help them put that application together, whoever was ultimately going to end up applying for it. So getting that application in before the funds are available is critical. And as long as all the stars line up, they should be next up for funding for the transportation, transportation alternative projects.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Just a couple of things from me. You know, if Inverness would just annex IV4, they could have it all. They got all the answers on how to take care of that, get the grants, sidewalk, just put it in a nice package. With all seriousness, though, so the executive director of, or the president of the Florida State Chamber was in town this past week, had the opportunity to spend some time with them, took them out to the Inverness Airport, met with the person that bought the 40 acres, and the landowner behind all of the industrial parks, so that he could talk to them, and kind of discuss, you know, what that project's going to look like, and the investment that the state has made, and the return on investment, and getting development in there. And what he's proposing is a incubator industrial park, which is kind of cool. So I thought that was fun. The other thing that I thought was noteworthy and interesting, I went to the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council yesterday. And our planning council out of Tampa Bay has been asked to look at a Clean Air Tampa Bay project, and it's $199 million. And so they met with Congressman Caster and the US EPA Deputy Administrator Janet McCabe, and also got tweeted out with the governor and the president. So that's pretty cool stuff. But the other thing that I thought was really cool is they are renaming the agency on Bay, Tampa Bay, to the Agency on Bay and Coastal Management, which will include now Hernando and Citrus County, along with, into the estuary programs. This doesn't mean it will be an estuary, but it means that we're now listed into that same program. And if, if we ever wanted to try to apply for an estuary, we could, but that's a heavy lift. So that's it for me.
Excellent, thank you. I too met with Florida Chamber President Mark Wilson, and toured Crystal River Airport, gave him some of my thoughts on where I think that that airport should end up going, and went across the street to Cybex, and it was great to see him. He's a big fan of Citrus County, and because we have such a great chamber here, among other reasons. I also understand he got to go out and do a lot of stuff with his family, which was nice, fishing and so forth. So Commissioner Schleba, do you have anything?
She's already done.
She's already done? And she's not even there? She snuck out? No, this is, community reports is different than our own, so we'll come back to her. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I put, L1 I put on here, just to see if we can get an update on what's happening with this MOU. I believe that it was February 14th or 15th, when the TDC approved these funds for three years to the City of Inverness, and we're still working on an MOU two months later.
We did, I did have a good productive meeting Friday with the city manager, and we both agreed to push this back to the assistant city manager, which was our economic development director, Frank, and our new tourism director. And it's my understanding, they had some great conversation yesterday. Actually, we sent the agreement redlined, and they've sent it back to us about 10 minutes to 12 today, I seen that. So the hope is that we can work through that quickly and swiftly, and it's on the next agenda. That's, that's our, that's our goal now, is to get this.
Exactly what I want to hear.
That's what we're doing. So I think we're, we're in a good, good spot, I think, so kind of going forward.
Perfect. All right, so L2, this is an addendum to the sales contract, or purchase contract, or agreement on Betts Farm. The, I'm not going to go through each one of these. Commissioners, you, you all have had a chance to read through it. This is having, having different conditions come forward after a due diligence period is not unusual, really, for any real estate deal. You've all purchased real estate in the past. After due diligence or inspections, you come back and, you know, maybe there's a roof that needs to be repaired, or maybe there's, neighbor's barn is built on your property line, and you need to get that addressed. Anyway, the, the prospective buyer has put forth this, this addendum. I did reach out to a very trusted source outside of our community, a land use attorney who's done many of these deals this size. And his comment to me was that he was surprised that these, these stipulations, these conditions weren't in the original agreement. And he told me that if, if this goes, let me see, how do I want to say this? Essentially, any future contract that we would see come forward, he would, he would suspect that that would be included in the contract. He said, any, any buyer would be foolish to spend that kind of money on a piece of property and not know exactly what they're going to be able to do with it. So I'm going to make a motion that we, that we add this addendum to the sales agreement, and hopefully the board will agree.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Kennard. Second, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment?
Curtis Bryant-Lacanto, I read through this. My concern with it is that it locks in the closing period to whenever this person decides they're going to bring it to the board for approval for whatever project they want to do on it. So there's no timeframe to close on it. It simply says that they're able to, you know, go through the process and then make the, only close if it's going to be approved for whatever project they want to do on it. And so we looked at some, several other projects throughout the county. We know some of these are denied, some of these are approved, but it's a lengthy process for this. So this could tie it up for, you know, six months, a year, two years, three years, whenever they decide to move forward with that zoning changes or whatever they're going to do with it. So that'd be my concern with that.
Kevin Cunningham, RE/MAX Realty One. And one of my obligations as a broker in this transaction is to make sure the obligation, contractual obligations of the contract are being met. And one of the obligations that were set in the last extension, the extension that was signed off, were to engage, were to make sure that the buyer is actively engaged in the due diligence process. And so every month, he's been, the buyer's been submitting to me what he's been doing and the due diligence process. And this month, because Easter got in the way, I didn't get it in time. I think I emailed it to everyone, but I wanted to make sure I read it into the, into the minutes, so you, you'd have an understanding that he is actively engaged in what he's been doing to get this process going, and get this sale to the finish line, this process to the finish line. I'll read through these, what he's already done. Geotechnical boring and expiration. Universal engineering did that. Received a complete report in March 22nd, '24. Environmental website delineation, all the field work completed, and seasonal high-water levels identified, wetlands limits, wetland limits flagged. Report completed February 5th. Biological species, field observations completed and report completed. Boundary survey field completed and mapping completed. Alta survey draft completed and issued in March 19, 2024. Title commitment received March 26, 2024, to complete the Alta survey. Wetlands limits survey field work and mapping completed. Wetland survey issued. Formal wetlands delineation and application prepared March 11th and submitted to SWIFTMUD RFI letter received April 1st, 2024. Requested site, and requested site visit. Aerial LiDAR, topographic aerial flights and office work completed. Mapping ongoing, scheduled for delivery and design by the team this week. Aerial photo imagery completed and will be delivered with LiDAR topography and CAD files. SWIFTMUD pre-application meeting conducted March 24, 2024. Good meeting to address design and criteria and action to be moved forward. Ongoing work on master planning and preliminary site layout of lots and land use areas, evaluating open spaces and buffered areas. Ongoing work for preliminary drainage and pond locations and sizes, coordination in conjunction with the lot layouts and wetland impact avoidance. Utility availability and existing utility location as build mapping and reviewed, has been reviewed. And these are the items that are pending activities. Formal wetland site meeting and review with SWIFTMUD. Finalized land survey topographic features with published LiDAR survey will be done by the end of April. Finalized lot layout and land use areas, buildable bubble, with area bubble plans. Conduct proposed drainage and pond system analysis and preliminary design based on SWIFTMUD criteria to check on conceptual pond locations and sizing estimates. I just wanted to read those into, to let you know that he's in the process and actively engaging in his due diligence. I am reporting it monthly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
I said thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Clark Still, and my professional address is 320 South Highway 41, Brandon Bank Building here in Inverness. After the contract was signed, I was requested to assist in the due diligence on this particular property, and I drafted the contract amendment. I want to put this in the proper context for you. This DRI was done in 1988. That's pre-year 1990 land development code. It's been modified three times. The most significant modification was the sale of the property in 2002 to the Citrus County School Board. When that happened, the approved 1,550 units, broken down into condos and multifamily, was not decreased, which meant that those 500, or half of the, half of the units, were now going to go on to the other half of the project. But the master plan was amended to reflect where they were going to go. That was probably done because in 2003, Citrus County property, bought this property, and it's been vacant ever since. In my review, I saw issues relative to the title, they're minor, but in a standard deal, the seller would clear those issues. That's the existing utility agreement, which has a guaranteed revenues clause, which would scare any lender who wanted to lend money against this project. There is the issue of the mineral rights. If you sell, you own 100% of your mineral rights, then by state statute, you keep a percentage of those mineral rights. Again, that would be an issue that any lender would raise in title review if they were going to finance this project. But the most significant thing I saw was, this project, these 1,550 units, have never been evaluated for hurricane evacuation. It's pre those state statutes, pre your comprehensive plant standard. And at the time, in 1988, going back to the context, this property was not in the flood zone. And as a result of subsequent action by the state government. And as a result of subsequent action by the state government, it's now in a flood zone. If you were to open the door, i.e. file an amendment, and an amendment is essential to get a quality project here, the developer is going to have to show that he meets hurricane evacuation. Well, I can tell you, under the 2020 Regional Council study, we fail today without one new residential unit. So the question becomes, is the impact de minimis? We went through this on the Crystal River Mall DRI when we added 400 residential units. We had to do a professional study. We had to go through a public hearing process. The governing body had to find that, that the impacts from that particular project were, again, de minimis. And if they're not de minimis, then the question becomes, what's the proper mitigation? So where we are now, and I can't recommend my clients for this, spend $6 million, you don't know that you're going to get approved. If this was a standard commercial deal, this would be what we do. And what we did say, I apologize if, we did say, hey, when we get there, and to answer the gentleman's question, we're required to file within 30 days. We file within 30 days. If we don't, we're in default. At the end of the deal, six to seven months, yes. $100,000 additional in the deposit goes hard. Standard commercial clauses. So to get it right, to avoid what you went through earlier today, we need to have this master plan approved to close. Questions?
Board, Commissioner Cannard?
I don't, I don't have a question. I've got an additional comment.
Well, your light was on, so it was...
Yeah. When, before this, before the county declared this surplus property and put it up for sale, and I'm, I'm sure that I've reminded this board in the past, I encouraged the board at that time to take all necessary steps to make sure that a would-be buyer knew exactly what they were getting and what they could do with it. The board didn't support that then and was in a hurry to get it listed. But we did that, and now what we've run up against twice are prospective buyers not knowing exactly what they can do with this property. The problem lies not with the buyer, but with the property and this DRI there, the flood zone. This, this amendment to that agreement helps them iron out those things before they put $6 million on the line. If we turn it down, we can put it back out on the market. And a year or two down the road, we're going to find the same thing. We're going to find a would-be buyer, for whatever price they seem to think it's worth, submit a contract with these contingencies in there because they still don't know what they're buying. My suggestion is, if this is a piece of property that we want to sell, given that we have not gone through and done the steps I suggested we do a couple of years ago, that we, we approve this, this addendum to the agreement. And let's continue down this road with this particular buyer.
I don't recall where my individual position was on that, but when, he brought it up when we were on the board. 99% sure, yeah?
I, I don't recall. I don't recall if you two were, were here yet.
Maybe, maybe you just brought it up in conversation.
Probably, I'm sure I brought it up a couple of times because I was a bit exasperated that we didn't do it properly the first time.
Because if it was brought up in our freshman year, I would just claim freshman mistake on that because you're absolutely right. So. Commissioner Schleber?
That's what I was going to say. I remember it was the summer. You brought it up. I remember watching it, and I thought, you were right. You brought it up again when Holly and I were there because there was problems with getting it sold. And you said, "Board, I brought this up. We need to fix this." And you were right. So listen to me now, hammer later, you were right. So I, I'm going to support. Is there a motion on the floor? I was, I was in the bathroom.
I made a motion. Commissioner Davis, second.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting to that. Anyone else want to speak? Open to the public for this particular matter? Going once, going twice, close, open to the public? Any further board discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So Commissioner Cannard, I understand what you're saying, but it goes back to when Ash Atari had this under contract. And what I remember being said at that point is, it only matters about what, whatever your particular development is. So how would you pre-qualify this for something not knowing what the development would be? How, how would the county spend money investigating about what could be built with no plan of what to build?
The county should have, first of all, the DRIs are... I don't know exactly how to say it, but DRIs are not in favor any longer. Developers don't want to use that, that, that development tool any longer. So they have to go in and look at where, where your wetlands are at. How much, how much developable land is there? Again, things have changed. A floodplain has changed significantly since the DRI has put on there. You know, there are a lot of different things. I'm not an engineer, but those are a lot, lot of different things that engineering would have gotten into. The soil borings, all of that type of stuff that was not done. And once, once, had the county invested the money at that time and put this package together, then would-be developers would know exactly what they were buying. Instead, there is a discounted price on it because they're assuming the risk if they were to move forward with purchasing this just as a DRI. This particular would-be buyer is saying, you know, they're, they're obviously not discounting the price to assume the risk. They're bringing forth this, this addendum to the contract, sticking with their purchase price, but I need to make sure that I can do what I want to do with this property. And my understanding is the density, the proposed density in the project that, that he would be moving forward with is significantly less than what the DRI would have, would have allowed.
And I understand what you're saying. It's just my concern is, these were all the same concerns that we had with Mr. Ash Atari. And when we let go of that contract, we put it back out there. There were three bidders. Nothing changed in that knowledge. And the contract was written in a way that, you know, seven days after the expiration of the feasibility study, they were going to put another $50,000 in, and 90 days on the feasibility. And we're basically giving an open-end contract at this point with, with unlimited amount of time. And I don't think that that is a prudent business model for the Citrus County taxpayers. I think we have to have some definition and some urgency to get this done and move it. If, if we're going to have something on the market, then there has to be some kind of timeline on this, not just open-ended because we could just let this go on and on. I mean, we can't make it perfect.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to.
We just can't make it perfect for them. So I mean, at some point, when you enter into a contract, you know that there's a certain risk involved in buying something. And they obviously know that there is a certain risk in making an offer on this. But I think that we have to have some, some timeline on this. I just don't think it's, it's a good way to do business to leave it open-ended.
There is, there, there is a big difference between these two buyers. Mr. Ashtari did not demonstrate that he had the funds to close on the property. If I recall, he had also expressed that he had been in ongoing conversations with SWIFTMUD about the wetlands and so forth that were on the property. And I believe, I don't, I think it was probably Frank that was here at the time and said, you know, he might have sent us an email. He said, "There's no conversations going on." So that, I, I think he had good intentions, but maybe was out in front of his skis a little bit.
Well, I understand from that aspect.
And I don't believe that that is the case. And, you know, certainly, you, you know, we can, we can reject this today. But again, the next contract that comes before us, maybe it's a year, maybe it's two years, three years, the next contract that comes before us will have these conditions in it. Unless the county is prepared to put the money up and go through all of these steps first before we would put it, put it out for sale. And then who knows what the market is for it at that point.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I don't have a problem extending for Mr. Dix. I'm sure he's doing all of his due diligence as he needs to. I mean, it takes some time. When I read the addendum, I made a note under number three entitlements. Because how I read it, it looked like the buyer could decide to use the land for whatever use that the buyer wanted to use. And if the board said no, then the property is just held on to because we're not closing until 30 days till after we say yes. I wasn't sure if I was getting all that correctly. And I talked to our attorney, and my concerns were not alleviated. So I do agree with Commissioner Bays. We need to have some sort of end date to this, so it's just not perpetual. And I don't, I think that number three, the paragraph entitlements, leaves it solely that we have to just agree to anything. And I don't know that we should be doing that.
Commissioner Cannard?
The concern that I have with that is that based on, based on the buyer's steps during due diligence, the buyer's putting forth the, the time, effort, and financial resources to get their part done. He has little to no control over how fast the county or staff moves when the ball's back in our court. And so if, you know, if we were to sign an arbitrary deadline of, you've got one year to close, you know, we just corrected a, a legal description today from 22 years ago. That's been hovering out there. Certainly, there are times when we move, I don't want to say very quick, but a little, little bit more swiftly than others. Today, just the last one that I had, L1, we're talking about $150,000 MOU with another governing body right here in the county that we're still two months out in trying to get this silly MOU out, out of, out of, out of the building. So the buyer has, the buyer has no control over how quickly the county moves. What the buyer would have, and not just in this case, but in, in any large real estate deal, is they've got financial resources that are invested. They've got real money in the deal. They don't want to sit and drag that out for months or years on end. Developers are ready to develop. They've got money there. Time is money. It's, it's time to turn it and go. So my, my suggestion would be that I think it's reasonable to assume that, that the buyer will, will be moving faster than what the county will be on this.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I don't think that alleviates my point on entitlements. I do understand, which I would be completely for, an extension and helping him get to where he needs to be in all the approvals and us moving as quickly as possible. I just, I just think that leaves us completely open-ended. Are you okay with anything? Because how I read that, you have to say yes to anything.
No, no.
Attorney shaking head, yes.
No, I, I, I disagree. I disagree. I think that, I think that what this is, what this is agreeing to is moving forward with the process. But they're still going to have to comply with our land development codes. Certainly, when it comes time to construct, they're going to have to comply with our, with our building codes.
Isn't that why people come before us, so they don't have to comply with certain things?
I don't think all the time, no.
Anyone further?
I, I had my light on for a long time.
Everyone's lights are on, so I, I need an, I, I have been swiveling and asking for nods, and you're never looking at me. So.
Could you have the motion repeated? I didn't, I didn't hear the motion.
Our motion was just to include this addendum to the, to the purchase agreement.
Okay. Can you second that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a couple of other comments.
Okay.
So under the closing contingencies, it's asking basically for us to prejudge approvals. So anybody that would be surrounding, that would have an issue that... And then there's also the, on, on five in closing, if anyone intervenes, they're asking us to intercede. I, I just, I don't, I just think that this is, this is why I thought it was so important when we did the contract with the buyer, that we laid it all out. And it was, I, I mean, instead of saying, coming back here in 90 days, why didn't we just put it all in there? Because that, that was, it was trickery is what it was. Anyway, I just think it needs to be tightened up before I can support it.
I did hear what Mr. Stillwell said and what has been invested into this property. I do know that, that, you know, there is an intended use for this property. I did question five with closing. I asked, "How long will it usually take?" I was told, "By the end of the year." Like you said, this developer wants to develop. And if, if Mr. Dix can't get from SWIFTMUD, SWIFTMUD's approval, nobody's going to get approval. And to hold his feet to the fire, I think, is, yes, could we have done things differently? But this train was on that track from before only Commissioner Cannard was on this board. So it's time to move on with this piece of land. It's time to get it properly developed and get it back on the tax rolls. And I'm going to support it.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Madam Attorney, could you clarify? Because the last commissioner spoke, said just SWIFTMUD approvals. How I read number three, that means basically this board needs to be okay, open-ended with anything that that buyer wants to put on that property, or we don't close. And if there's no's, they still get to hold the contract. So if we said no for years, could they just have it for years? Am I reading this wrong? Can you help, can you help me understand this a little bit better?
Madam Attorney?
Thank you. So I think you have to read three and four together. And basically, the, the reason that when this came, when it was submitted to, the administrator and I, when we read that, the reason that we didn't, or we, I wrote back to Mr. Stillwell and said that it couldn't be supported to allow the addendum was because when you read those two things together, the approval has to be, it's all approvals. It's, this board has to approve whatever modifications are necessary to the DRI. Or if there's a, you know, a site plan, you know, whatever has to come before you. This board has to approve it and/or, I, I understand there was some discussion about the City of Crystal River annexing it into the City of Crystal River. So that would be an approval that would be necessary. So it's any approvals, SWIFTMUD, this board, Crystal River, you know, any approvals would have to be favorable. Whereas right now, at the end of due diligence, then there would be no out for those types of denials, if those denials were there. So it's significantly changing just, you know, the approvals.
Can I finish my questions? Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. No, no, you're, you're answering correctly.
She was trying to make sure she held the floor because Commissioner Cannard wants to.
I wasn't interrupting, not intentionally.
So what about for land use? So I'm, I'm sure that it's supposed to be for residential or mixed use, whatever, you know, he's looking at. But let's just say all that changed and it was, I don't know, a big factory they wanted to put there. Or something that maybe wouldn't be... they wanted to put there, or something that maybe wouldn't be, I mean, is that included for land use change?
I believe the intent of the contract has always been residential. So I, I don't, I don't, I'm not concerned about the change from residential to something other. But if you listen to what Clark, Mr. Stillwell said, when the DRI was approved, wetlands were different, the watershed was different. And so although, and I'm sorry, I don't know the exact numbers, but I'll just make something up. Let's say the DRI approved 1,500 units. It sounds to me like what's being uncovered with the due diligence is that the number of units is going to be different, I'll just say. So if the numbers are different, that's going to require coming to you, coming to the Board of County Commissioners in some kind of a land use matter to make those changes. My concern isn't it not being residential, because I think the contract says residential. My concern is just whatever it is that comes before you is going to be different. And you, he's basic, the contract addendum is basically saying if, if the board doesn't approve it, then the contract is null and void.
Right. And that's what, since I haven't spoken yet, it's like Commissioner Canard said when he talked to another land use attorney, it's pretty clear. I mean, developers are in the business to make money and we have a contract for a certain price, and if he can't make the return based on us not approving something, then that's, that's fine. You know, the contract goes away and we have to regroup and put it back on the market in a different way. We have full power to deny anything that he brings forward, but let him bring forward what he thinks is the best use for the land that'll allow him to make the money back, and we'll either approve it or we won't.
Something that you said, because that I could get on board with, but I don't see that in the contract. You said if we don't approve it, the contract's null and void, and I don't see that. I just see that if we do approve it, it, we close within 30 days. So if that, if that was actually it, because how I'm reading it now, and maybe I missed something, I don't have my glasses on, but I wouldn't want us not to approve it, and then the contract's just still sitting there until, into perpetuity, because maybe they just wait, wait until it gets approved by a different board.
Can you shed light on that? And we need to go to Commissioner Canard whenever you're done, Commissioner Finnegan.
Currently, there are no contingencies in the approved contract for approvals. So once the due diligence period ends, you know, upon that, the buyer has to make a determination. Do I continue forward or do I not continue? If they choose to continue forward and thereafter, it comes before the Board of County Commissioners or the City of Crystal River, and they are not approved for whatever it is they intended, they still have to buy the property. This contingency is being added to say that if I'm eight months down the road, I come before the county commissioners, my plan is denied, then I don't have to buy the property. So you don't close until after all approvals are given and 30 days, plus 30 days.
Which I personally think is an entirely reasonable request.
Did I answer the question?
That clears it up a lot, yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Canard?
I don't think so. I mean, I was going to mention a couple of things. I have no earthly idea, but I would imagine the DRI is going away. Developers are doing, are not utilizing this tool. It's an old tool developed by the state. There's too much reporting involved in it. So that, that would not be an unusual request for somebody to move forward on a vacant piece of property that has a DRI on it, to look to get rid of that and, you know, like I said, ultimately decrease the density significantly from what the DRI allows. But anyway.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You said aye? You did. Motion, motion carries unanimously.
Five zero. Congratulations.
You know, I've regretted a few of those votes when I was a freshman, not that you're a freshman, but doing the go-along vote. Coke building comes to mind. Commissioner Finnegan, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Bays?
I was just reminded that I'm way older than a freshman.
No, this is your second term. There was just a big gap. That's all I'm saying. Oh, okay. And I have nothing further, but Madam Attorney, do we have an answer on what we can do legally?
With regard to H7, I understand that you had two motions which both failed, but I don't believe that you're foreclosed for any other motions related to H7. It's just that the two motions that were offered didn't fail. Like, for example, if someone wanted to make a motion for a 30-day moratorium, or a 15-day, or a seven-day, you know, any of those alternatives I think are still available to you. So I was kind of puzzled when, when you all seemed to think that it was over, but just those two motions failed.
I, I think the idea is that we still want to, some of us still want to do the ordinance. So the ordinance requires two passes. One of it has, one has to be by four fifths. One is the emergency declaration. Can someone on the prevailing end re, bring that back up legally?
Yes.
Okay? And then we could do the same thing all over again.
Yes.
So we could do that potentially after the 501s if people get an opportunity to meet with staff and get their briefing.
Yes.
Okay. Board? Yes, ma'am?
Okay. That's why I wanted an extension on the moratorium, so that we would have time to get staff and to educate ourselves on this ordinance. And if you guys want a 30-day extension, Attorney shaking her head at me, I don't know what that...
What?
It doesn't have to be an emergency thing if we have proper, put it properly on the agenda.
I understand. So we have 10 minutes before our 501s. So I'm going to, is that okay? I'll move on to open to the public and we can...
Sure.
Yes, sir?
I've got something to say about the discussion that was just going on.
I'm sorry.
What is the day that marks one year that we started this moratorium?
April 25th.
April 25th?
Or April 50th.
Oh, I see where you're going. That's a good question.
Phone a friend. Eric? It is, I, I believe it is April 15th. I believe it is April 15th.
So I will not support extending it a day beyond one year. And before we start making all these plans with meeting with staff afterwards and so forth, I would want to make sure that there are four of us who at least believe that we can get there on the ordinance. Otherwise, there's no reason to continue down that road. We're just not going to implement emergency ordinance.
The ordinance is only just a majority, right? Three, five?
No.
The ordinance is a majority. The hearing on the ordinance is the four fifths.
Okay. All right. So we could put the ordinance on the future agenda?
That's what I said.
As long as it's short of...
But you can't continue the moratorium beyond a year.
April 25th.
I didn't hear you say the date of the moratorium. If you said that, I apologize.
April 25th.
April 25th.
Is the one year.
And what's our next meeting?
April 23rd.
23rd. Yeah, that's 14 days, yep.
That still doesn't meet the notification requirement, so does it?
Your moratorium, the stop issuance directive that you all have entered ends on April 15th.
Okay.
You just said the 25th.
The one year is April 25th.
Madam Chair?
So, let me ask a question of the attorney. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
The emergency agenda item took, needed four votes.
Correct.
If you properly put it on there in the correct manner, you only need a three vote to get the ordinance passed. That's what I was trying to get at. And I said, I didn't say the right amount of days, but if, if our next meeting's before the 23rd, couldn't the majority accomplish what they wanted to accomplish by properly notifying the public this is going to be on the agenda?
They would, the board would have to extend the current stop.
And what, what I'm about to do, I believe I can do this, and this is why I wanted to ask, is I was on the prevailing side of the failure of the moratorium, so I can make a motion that we extend it to April through midnight April 24th.
Yes.
Correct.
You're on the, I'm sorry.
Extend the permit, hold on permits.
These two were on the, these two were on the prevailing, oh, you're talking about the other motion, I'm sorry.
The permit hold, I was on the prevailing end, so I would like to make a motion that we extend the permit hold through midnight April 24th.
Second.
That's what I wanted the floor for.
Thank you. We're on the same page.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Davis, the second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any further board discussion? Commissioner Canard?
I want to make, okay, sorry. After him, please.
I don't, I don't know why we're looking for the bottom, only passing this, this ordinance by three votes, but that's okay. What is the, what is the, what is the notice that would be required? How many days will be required to notice this ordinance?
10 days.
Okay. So we could get there by the 24th?
Yes, sir. The 23rd meeting, yes, sir.
So by extending the, the permit hold until the 24th, does that take us beyond the one-year mark? Which is potentially a problem.
No, because you're going to have a meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. So we stay within that one-year period of time if we only extend it till then, and we would be able to meet the, the notice requirement of 10 days, and we could put this ordinance back on the agenda for the 23rd then?
Or a version of this ordinance that...
Or a version of this.
Commissioners are comfortable with.
It would be nice if we could get to five and not looking for the bottom.
And I just want to make sure that we're doing this properly. The first motion, there was a motion by Jeff Canard, seconded by Commissioner Bays, it failed 3-2. Commissioner Finnegan and I were the two. She just made the second. She wasn't part of the prevailing part.
That was the emergency.
It was a different motion.
No, I'm talking about the first motion was made by Jeff Canard and Rebecca Bays. The second motion was made by me and Diana Finnegan, and that failed 2-3. I just want to make sure we're doing things correctly. If Diana Finnegan was part, the two vote against the emergency order, is she able to second this motion?
Yes, she will.
Okay.
Yes, she can second the motion because Commissioner Davis was on the prevailing side.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
It's a different motion.
No, she's, she's right. It's the second motion.
Could you say that louder?
Commissioner Schleba is correct.
Well, it wasn't, we, she made a motion for 60 days. Commissioner Davis made a motion till April 23rd, so it's a different motion.
Right. It's, this is actually a motion to reconsider.
It's reconsidering.
That, and to reconsider, you have to be on the prevailing side.
I see.
But it is okay that she seconds it?
It is okay if you all want to be crystal clear and you don't want any ambiguity.
Would you like me to withdraw just to be clear?
I think that's probably wise.
If someone else is going to second it. All right, I'll withdraw my second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you. I'm a rule follower, thank you. I feel much better.
Good, good call, Commissioner Schleba. Motion by Commissioner Davis, the second by Commissioner Canard. Now, is there any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Where the heck are we? Okay. Second, open to the public. Anyone like to address the board?
Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills. You've had a hard day, and I commend you for being calm with all the high energies with the, especially with the breakdowns that are going on during this time of communication. It's probably because we are in mercury retrograde, if you believe it, which affects how people speak to one another. So I do want to commend you for staying calm and getting through all of the muddle of miscommunications. Last meeting, last meeting, I was, I asked a question about Duke Energy. Well, I took it upon myself and I did contact Duke Energy. And I think they're going to alleviate that problem of going on people's property and trespassing. I do have one question, actually, it's a dual question. I'd like to know what the ordinances are pertaining to security lights, because I've noticed that around the community, some of the bright lights are causing blindingness. There's one particular that's directly across the street from, I believe, the bowling alley. It's a car lot, and his light is facing directly westbound instead of onto the parking lot. I think it's going to be a safety issue, so I'd like to know who I can speak to to find out what the actual ordinance is of the wattage that can be used per bulb that puts out illumination that is blinding to people. Other than that, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Should he report that to code compliance, Mr. Howard?
We'll, we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else want to address the board? Seeing none, closed public comment. And Ms. Stanton, you're up.
Upcoming meetings, regular meeting, April 23rd, 2024, at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse, room 100, 110 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida. Regular meeting, May 14th, 2024, at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse, room 100, 110 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida. Regular meeting, May 28th, 2024, at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse, room 100, 110 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida.
All right. We have no upcoming workshops and special meetings, and so we are recessed until 5:01, which is a minute ago. But we do need, we need a recess. 10 minutes, please. But we do need, we need a recess, 10 minutes, please.
How about 80 minutes?
First Commissioner Finnegan, we got one minute to go.
I should have used my man voice today, then maybe somebody would have heard me.
I didn't know you had a man voice.
I'm going to start using that. I'm like, here.
Hello, Commissioner Kennard.
I can hear you down there, till I take them out of my ears.
Kennard, you know better. I'll call this meeting back to order. Ms. Stanton, by the way, you want to grab this? All right. Joanna?
Yeah, and so these are quasi-judicial ordinances, so in the absence of the county attorney, I'll read the preamble, and then we'll go from there unless-
Is the county attorney gone for the evening?
I don't think so, no. Her stuff is still here. An ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County land use atlas map and the master plan for the Clearview Estates Development of Regional Impact, DRI, for multiple changes, including extending the expiration date and allowing interchangeability between uses while not exceeding the previously approved project totals for each use type, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And now I'll pass it to you. You're fine.
With regard to the current application, do you have any expertise communications you need to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Slabah.
No.
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 Thank you, Madam Chair.
And the applicant is here for his presentation.
Good evening now, right, Commissioners? My name is Eric Abel, I'm Vice President of Citrus Hills Investment Properties, LLC. The applicant in this particular PUD application, we're looking for, rather straightforward, I'm pleased to say that, you know, at PUDC, we had 7O approval for this. That's why I say they're benign, but you never know. Extension of time for all, for the DRI to go to 30 years, and it coincides with what we're trying to do throughout our development. We have a changing the guard in the, in the Tamposy leadership, so that the next generation will take it, and we're trying to make an open boulevard that, that he can succeed in making, continuing to make Citrus County a wonderful place to live. Number two that we're asking for is elimination of annual or biennial reports, which I think you've faced in the past. It really is housekeeping issues, DRIs aren't required. DRIs are now, in fact, controlled at local level, so that they know, the county staff knows exactly when development occurs. I don't need to tell a third party, Tampa or Tallahassee, if and when and what development has occurred. The third item is to designate the undeveloped or unused non-residential areas as interchangeable among all non-residential and residential uses, so long as the overall quantities and growth densities of the DRI project do not exceed the original approved, or the current approved DRI totals. To put that in layman's terms, we're trying to basically make the commercial office and retail portion of our property of a development available to put residential into. So I, I think that's probably a downgrade for intensity from, from a planning standpoint. I hope you'll address that one, if it matters. But basically, it's a better, is it better to have as a neighborhood, instead of buffering, you might want residential near it as opposed to a commercial to your existing residential properties. But we're looking at to, again, broaden our possibilities and allow us to put residential within what's currently designated as only commercial office and retail. In doing so, we want to, there's a traffic land use exchange table that you can, that developers and planners use to measure the traffic impacts of commercial and retail when compared against residential, so that if we do put residential in the area, it won't create any more impacts than the commercial office retail does currently. It will, will stay symbiotic with, with this environment. That, that means that we would need to be able, or we'd like to be able to go to six dwelling units per acre in accordance with the table, and at the same time, preserve at least 20% of the growth site as permanent open space. So it makes a better neighborhood, perhaps. Finally, or from our perspective, that we're willing to live with, the idea of establishing a buffer is required between, between any of the different uses, per the code. That's it, in short. Any questions, I'm here for, to answer.
Board?
So are you taking all the commercial and turning it into residential? Are you leaving some portion of it as commercial?
We're, it will all be, continue to be labeled as commercial office and retail. However, we'd like the ability to put what remaining residential we do have, which quite frankly is not much. I think we have about 25 units left. So even at six to the acre, I couldn't take up many acres, just about 70 acres of commercial right now. So predominantly, under any scenario, it will remain commercial office, retail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abel.
All right, he summed it up very well. This is an amendment to the Clearview Estates Development of Regional Impact. And here is the Clearview Estates Development. It mostly is developed, you'll see along, right on 44, that's the area that's not yet developed. And this is their master plan. So I'm going to zoom in here a little bit. This is their commercial area right along 44 and up around Kensington. So what this application asks for, a few things he talked about. One of them is extending the expiration date. It is set to expire this, later this year. Obviously, they have not developed this front area yet, and they want to continue, so they're asking for that. They're asking to remove the requirement for biennial reports. Absolutely, that's an old statute remnant that's no longer there. And then they're asking for interchangeability with their commercial and office uses. That's not a, not really a, a big deal either, but they do have limits on how much they can have. Already in the DRI, they have a traffic land use conversion table that allows them to, for example, take some commercial and convert it to a number of single-family residential that has the traffic impacts that a commercial might have. Right now, they have 11 units left for residential that they did not plat. It just happened to be the way they designed it, and they have 11 units on their, on their books that they have not put. So they can put 11 units out there if this is approved. They do have that conversion table, so they can also take some of their commercial, more of their commercial away. I know he mentioned about 25. I don't think they really have a target at this point. I don't mean a target development, I mean a, a target number. But they, they will be able to do that if this application is approved. Staff had no concerns. The Planning and Development Commission discussed this on February 1st, and also had no concerns. I agree with Mr. Abel, it is a downzoning. Most of the time, people don't want to live right on 44, but they do have the interior roads running alongside it, and I'm sure he's going to plan it accordingly. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Katu. So, conduct the public hearing, yes? Would anyone like to speak for or against this application? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You'll need to fill out a green card to give to the clerk afterwards, is fine. And you get three minutes. And we, we answer questions or concerns after everyone has spoken, just so you know. Give it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
Okay. I'm a resident of Belmont Hills, my name is Cherie Kirk. And I'm presenting this as shown in some exhibits on these documents. My home was and continues to be direct- continues to be directly affected by Citrus Hills' development of 53 acres of land behind our property. If you look at the before and after photos, you'll see that the land in Exhibit A was once covered with pine trees. Those pine trees were cut down and cleared out shortly after we moved into our home. The tree stumps were then extracted and placed in piles. Then the burning began, and that's Exhibit B. Burning the stumps scattered over the 53 acres took place for five solid months during the months of November 2021 to April of 2022. During that time, the workers would grade the land, then start piles of stumps burning as they would leave or move to another area. These burnings would take place evenings, weekends, holidays, when and wherever the workers would be least impacted by the smoke. The smoke drift was quite disruptive, as we could not open our windows, walk outside, or plan outdoor activities on our properties whenever the smoke drift came in our direction. We live in a retirement community where people are challenged with a variety of health concerns, heart issues, lung issues, and cancer. And random smoke inhalation is not something we signed up for when we moved here. If you look at Exhibit C, this is another area of property that was recently cleared in March of 2024 by Citrus Hills. This parcel of land is located in Terra Vista, near the sales center and the Skyview Restaurant and golf course. You can see that the burning was not involved when clearing this piece of property. The pine tree stumps were ground up with a chipper, so we know that Citrus Hills is capable of giving consideration to the residents and prospective customers when it is most advantageous to them. The property under consideration on this application includes large areas of pine trees as well. While it is understood that Florida residents are within their rights to burn yard clippings on their properties, this is a different level of burning that affects a large number of residents. We don't want to see this abuse we endured repeated as before. If designated burn days are stipulated, at least the residents would have the opportunity to plan for those events and not be randomly disrupted by them for months on end. We ask that the council take this matter into serious consideration, and at the very least stipulate designated planned days for burning when areas of pine trees are being cleared for development. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Mr. Abel, would you like to respond?
Sure. In regards to how a developer or development chooses what it will do, it's really the, at the time, what is the best use of the material? In the case of Belmont Hills, that was a timbering operation. There was a lot of timber there, and it demands that we make good use of that timber and sell it to plants and all. It got down, the timber itself. Now, in the end, they were stuck with just roots for Belmont too, because it was a wonderful forest for a while, right, that we had planted a planned forest. In the case of Bobby Glenn that was compared against and was 10 acres, a small site, the timbering operation was, was small and easy at that time in the bid process, that the crew that took out the timber, removed the timber and the stumps, could do that more readily with the equipment they had to do handle 10 acres. That's a far cry from logging 20-year-old trees, and quite frankly, Clearview's some of our oldest trees. I think we planted those in 1999. Been a long time. But they're a wonderful product for paper mills and also pole pines and saw, and all. But I want to make sure that our hands aren't tied to not get commercial marketability for what we have in assets. So I'd like to be able to have the freedom to sell that pine as, for its natural resources, as opposed to perhaps just chipping it, making it all chip, and I'm not sure how long that would take, and the noise has its own issues. We also had complaints in Bobby Glenn when we developed that. None of it's free. Development does make a little bit of noise as it happens. But once it's there, I'm certain it will be beautiful.
I do have to compliment you on the coming down 486. I'm fully aware that you own lots of buffers that are ag land and you sell the timber, but you don't clearcut it. You take about 90% of it out and leave scattered cover, which still allows for a buffer for the residents, which I appreciate.
Our predominant driving determination for all of our actions is always to make the development as nice as it can be. How we get there might vary with the property, but we do certainly, I appreciate you saying that, that's certainly something we try to do.
I am a little concerned about the burning. Is there anything you can offer on that?
I don't know what the plans are right now. I would expect this to be a large timber operation, not unlike Belmont. We are certainly glad to take this back to developer at the time of bidding and see if it makes any particular difference in the bidding process. You know, if it's six one way, half dozen the other, I understand now, and we'll try to perhaps go with the chipping if we think that's the least impact of the two, or the lesser impact of the two.
I sometimes have lung issues myself, so I, you know, personally speaking, I feel for the speaker that at least know the days. If you can't truck the stumps offsite, that would be a good neighbor thing to do.
Okay. I certainly would more than consider. I will take it back and make sure it's well-considered as an option for us.
And I live in Clearview.
So you'll know right away.
Yeah, so please, so you're gonna hear from me if you don't, if you get, if you do lots of smoke, okay?
I would let you know in advance, as soon as I can, all the residents, to be honest with you.
And for the record, I asked the attorney just to be sure that I didn't have to recuse myself. I have no, no financial gain or detriment that will inure to me in this decision, so I am not allowed to recuse myself. But I am allowed to keep a tight eye on you.
Yes, you should.
Okay. Alright. Alright, board looking for a motion?
Motion to. Motion to approve PUD-2023-00011, to execute the ordinance for the Clearview Estates.
Second.
And that's with conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mission carries unanimously.
Item T2, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County land use atlas map and the master plan for the Brentwood planned unit development, Davis Reserve area only, for multiple changes, including allowing the installation of a fence/wall up to eight feet in height, and increase in the allowable multi-family designation to up to 20 dwelling units per acre, while not exceeding the previously approved project totals for the use type, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And with regard to this application, have you had any ex parte communications to disclose? And we'll start with Commissioner Slaybaugh.
No.
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 Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe the applicant is here.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eric Abel, Vice President of Brentwood Farms, LLC. The applicant on this particular, there you go, you might need it. It's a different entity, so I might need it. Quite simply stated, we really are looking for, there was a time when eight-foot fences were allowed. Over time, I think the LDC changed and went to six feet. We would like it to go back to eight feet, and I know it allows eight feet to this day, but we need your approval to get there. We'd like to put that for buffer and privacy around our Davis Reserve development. And then the second item, we have, now I know this number, 55 units left over after development of Davis Reserve. What we view as plating 399 units in what we call Davis Reserve, but as part of the Davis Reserve boundary, we would have the ability to put in multifamily for the remaining. And we'd like to increase the density of requests for that, for those 55 units to be up to 20 dwelling units to the acre, which is currently allowed by the code. We want to try to go ahead and get that, so that we can use that in our planning for future development of that multifamily.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Katu?
Alright, this will amend the Brentwood area planned unit development. This is not a DRI, but it is Davis Reserve, which is a very specific part of the development, but it's not yet platted. They're in the improvement plan stage now. Kind of seeing some of the pictures, the construction that's going on to make those, maybe. Come on, zoom slideshow, there we go. Alright, we'll just give up. There we go, thank you. So this is the Davis Reserve area outside of the already-built area of Brentwood. It is under construction right now, so that many of those trees are gone, but they are putting in infrastructure as we speak. So this application is requesting two things, as Mr. Abel said. They do want to allow eight-foot fences within this area only instead of six-foot. He's correct. The land development code has changed over the years since Brentwood was developed, was an eight-foot in place, now it's six. So this would just apply to the new area where they have not yet sold homes or even created the lots yet, but they're underway. Really gonna have a problem with this one. There we go. There's the master plan. So what Brentwood has, Brentwood has an interchangeability in their planned unit development already. So although it says villas, they can do multifamily, they can do single-family, they have the ability to move them around within the already-approved numbers. So this application, although he's asking for an increase in density from 12 units an acre to 20, it does not give him any more units than is already previously approved. So this would be a little bit more dense in the undeveloped area out here in Davis Reserve, but it also would increase the open space by doing that and not give any additional units. And I wanted you to see this. This is approximately Davis Reserve. It's under construction right now. You can see the layout of the lots. Now, if this gets approved, he may be changing these to make it a little bit more dense, a little bit more open. And this is kind of what it looks like today. They are under construction. At the Planning and Development Commission, there was a lot of public there, a lot of misconceptions or talk about areas outside of the Davis Reserve area. This is not affecting, or this is not impacting, the existing Brentwood. As far as, we did not advertise for the existing Brentwood. They wanted to allow higher fences also in existing Brentwood area. We can't do that as part of this application. This is just for the Davis Reserve area. The Planning and Development Commission did recommend approval on February 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Board, any questions before I open the public hearing?
Do you know what the vote was?
Ah, good question.
Vote?
I'll have to look that up.
Seven zero.
It was seven zero?
Yeah, I think I put that in the backup. I apologize, I don't have it on top of my head. Yeah. Yeah. I'm trying to put the minutes in there, if not minutes, at least summary minutes in there, so you can see what's happening at the PDC.
Thank you. Alright, we'll open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against this item? Going once, going twice, oh. Please state your name for the record and fill out a green card. After you speak is fine. And give it to the clerk.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Goodwin, and I live at 2169 West Deer Trail Lane. It's adjacent to, here if you can see, the property is immediately behind us. And like the lady who spoke before, I have, you know, I have had complaints about how this construction has been. Like, we've had to eat a lot of dirt, and they're going right up against our property line with their big equipment, the dirt trucks and the, and the backhoes and excavators and dozers. And it's like about 20 to 30 times a day that when they come across there, that my house just like vibrates. My pictures have gone wonky. We eat, you know, like I said, like the dirt has come into my lanai and just really, you know, clean it up one day and it's there the next day. And there's been times when the, it's like the Sahara out there. The wind blows and there's these huge clouds of dust and dirt flying. And, I mean, I want to say that I am for an eight-foot fence. I would really like that. And, but, you know, just, it's been tough losing all the trees, and I thought that there was gonna be some green space allowed right behind our property, and, you know, all the trees are gone. And anyway, I just, the other concern I have is about infrastructure. You know, hospitals and schools, you know, sheriff departments, all the, all the support things that a community needs. And that's a whole lot of cars and people to drop in one place all at once. And I just want to voice my concerns and I hope that, you know, that there's some, being looked at, the, you know, like an ER expansion. It's like, from my house, it takes 20 minutes to get to Citrus Memorial, and it takes 20 minutes to get to Seven Rivers, but the little standalone ER, you know, is like two minutes away. But I didn't know if there's any plans for expanding that into a full hospital with a full ER department. I would like to know that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Alright, we'll close the public hearing. Welcome to our world as being Commissioners, trying to work with the growth. So, we started at 9:00 AM this morning with Metro forecasting, which is the crystal ball I've been asking for since I took this job. Metro forecasting will help us know exactly what we need where, in terms of trying to make sure that Citrus only gets better and better. And that includes hospitals, schools, everything. So, we're on it. It's pretty much a full-time job trying to, more than a full-time job to wrangle it. So I appreciate your concerns, and I'm glad you're for the fence. Mr. Abel, how fast can that fence be built? That would help with the construction dirt. It's just a reality of construction, unfortunately.
That has to be done before we get started, Ben, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, it'll be over soon. I'm sorry. We've closed public comment, I'm sorry. We can't, we can't undo that, so. But thank you, I appreciate that. I think you guys are building about five houses within a stone's throw of my house right now, so I hear construction noise all the time. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Yep, looking for a motion?
I was just gonna comment on the public input. There is a unsubstantiated rumor that your concerns regarding additional healthcare facilities out in that area will be alleviated in the not-too-distant future. I don't know anything more than that.
I've heard the same thing, so.
Alright.
Looking for a motion?
Alright, so I will make a motion based on competent substantial evidence that we approve PUD-2023-00013 with the, was it 22 conditions?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mission carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Abel. And we are, let's see, make sure I don't have to say anything else, right? We're just adjourned? Yep. We're adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.